Yeah, I do this all the time. Here we go. All right, Richard, we'll talk later.
Okay.
Bye, buddy.
I hear you. I'm gonna get the, um, I'm gonna get the chair here for the planning board.
The chairman of the board is gonna come in.
She always comes in late.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're, um, we're coming to order at 6:30. Our chair will be on Zoom. Our member, Mr. Semple, will be on Zoom. To my far right, Troy Larson, myself, Jim Akabachi. I'm the clerk and vice chair. I'll be acting as chair tonight, but our chair is gonna be on and will be participating in the conversations. Mr. Semple will be on Zoom. He'll be participating and voting in the conversations. Chris Conti is here as an alternate. He may be voting on some. When we accuse ourselves, we'll announce that on a case by, application by application So I think I've said who's here and who's not, but the only one that's missing is Veronica. And Veronica Debonese may show up. If she does, we'll announce it at that time. So approval of mean it minutes. We've got two sets of minutes, one that we tabled, one from last week. For both sets of minutes and all minutes going forward, and I will announce this every time we do minutes, the board's gonna reserve the right to amend any minutes if we go through them and find. We always pre-review them. We always try to make them as accurate as possible. Sometimes you read something a second or a third time and you go, oh, my goodness, that should say may, not shall, or whatever. So such amendments will be allowed in the future. That said, we have minutes from 7:24, 2024, and 8:14, 2024. I've reviewed both sets of minutes. I find them acceptable. Has anybody on the board found any other edits? There have been edits made and remade. All that said, if one of you guys will make a motion to approve as presented and the other will second it, we can vote on it.
So moved.
So it's been moved by Mr. Larson, and I'm gonna, because you're here.
I'll second.
I'm gonna let you vote, yeah, and I don't know if Nazzy and Richard can arm wrestle over Zoom, who's gonna not vote. We'll all vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Troy, myself, aye.
Aye.
Chris, aye. Nazzy?
Aye.
Aye. Richard?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Okay, I'll sign them later just for the sake of time. We have two items that we're gonna deal with kinda quick. The first one is Angela McGowan, 2123.
Hello. Hi, Attorney Gillian Morton. We just got a unanimous vote that there was a substantial material change on planning board. This was on Monday. We don't have anything yet from the planning office. I think they're gonna do just a memo so you guys have that. So I would request a continuance September 11, I believe, is the next hearing.
Okay, is that, is that, I don't have it in front of me. Is that the right date?
I believe that's.
Yeah, September 11.
That's the deadline, too.
Okay, so you're gonna need to grant us the continuance of the extra days to make a decision as well.
What would you like for that one?
How many days do we usually have? 20 days after the?
Usually at least a month for you guys.
Well, let's just add.
10/11?
So September and October 11. How's that?
Okay, perfect. I'll send notice over.
For September 11, continue. And then decision, October 11. I'm just gonna repeat what you said in case anybody didn't understand it. Nazzy and Richard, did you get it?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. So the planning board said, yeah, go ahead, reconsider. It's not in writing. It hasn't come to us officially yet, so we can't officially act. We're gonna continue. That's gonna be a motion by Troy and seconded by Richard, by Christopher. All in favor?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And Nazzy, aye. We all unanimously is continued.
Thank you.
The ayes are above the nose. The ayes have it. See, ayes are always above the nose. Richard and Audrey Creighton, 24 Cove Street. Similar situation?
Oh, I didn't hear that situation.
God, it's really not similar. It's just that we're gonna boot you out of here quick, that's all.
Yes, Dennis Conry appearing in behalf of Richard and Audrey Creighton. We have, I've been in discussions with Mr. Turner, building commissioner. Our appeal was based upon a decision that he had made relative to a violation in the, at the site. I received today a letter from Mr. Turner indicating that he's withdrawing his, his notice of violation. He's, that's been rescinded. For that reason, there's no reason for our appeal to go forward, so I would ask that it.
I have a copy of the letter.
Yes.
I get it. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, because there's no violation, there's nothing to appeal, but there was a violation, you did appeal it, so your withdrawal and your appeal, and we're gonna accept your withdrawal. And again, Mr. Larson motions to approve that.
I do.
Mr. Conti seconds it.
I do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Chris Conti, aye.
Nazzy, aye.
Richard, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good night. Thank you for coming down here for that. Okay, we've got those matters taken care of. Now we're gonna move on to on a Zoom meeting. The applicants can't be present in the room. They're on Zoom, and this is gonna be VBM Properties LLC Site Plan Review in variance for 3138 Cranberry Highway, Town Tavern. So far, all I got is Nazzy, and I don't have Richard. I don't know, Richard, are you shy, or are you just not?
You need my camera on or just my voice?
Yeah, I got your voice, but I don't have your camera.
But.
We're trying to brighten the room with your smiling face. Okay, anybody from Town Tavern yet?
Yes, this is Dave Newhall with Crocker Design Group on behalf of Town Tavern.
The room just got brighter. And I want, for the record, Veronica Debonese has entered, so now we have another member of the board present. So we have a full board. Oh, full. I'll get them written down later. Okay, Town Tavern, go ahead.
Yes, we're here to request a continuance to your next meeting. We're just in the process of wrapping up the updated architectural plans to incorporate changes we're making per the comments we received at our previous meeting where we presented to the board.
So you're altering your plans to reflect the comments that were made. Your engineer hasn't got it all drawn up yet. You need a couple more weeks.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a request by the applicant to continue, and would somebody make a motion to accept that request so we can vote on it?
So moved.
Okay, Troy has motioned to accept the request for continuance. I may need you to continue the time for us to make a decision as well.
Yep.
Accordingly, 30 days after the, whatever the, whatever the current clock is, we'll just advance it as necessary.
Yep, that's totally acceptable to us.
Okay, so it's been moved, and it's been, has anybody seconded it yet?
Seconded.
Seconded by Richard. All in favor, say aye to accept this request for continuance. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Chris? Should those two be? I'm gonna get a, everybody, and I know you're an alternate, but you're here, they can see you. Go on the record. Richard?
Aye.
And Naz?
Mr. Chair, I will yield for the rest of the night for Mr. Conti take my seat.
You'd like to have him take your seat for the, for the rest?
Of the meeting, yes, please. So I'm not gonna vote, I'm just being.
You're not gonna vote, but you're gonna be here to comment if, if needed.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, you get that? Chris?
Yes.
I'm looking in the direction where Richard sits. Okay, so that's continued until 9/11/24 with an appropriate continuance on the time for decision. Did we vote?
We did.
Okay, we're done. You can sign off, or you can stay and watch.
Hey, thank you, have a good evening.
You, too. The next thing in front of us tonight is 3424 Fos Realty Corp., special permit slash variance slash site plan review, 3037 Cranberry Highway. I believe that's the gas station, isn't it?
I think so.
Nazzy, nod your head if that's the Cape Cod Gas.
Yes, yeah, I believe so. Probably where it should be, yeah.
Somebody here for that? Yep, I see.
Yes, sir.
Oh, we got easels coming up to the podium and everything.
If needed.
It's gonna be an official one.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Brian Grady, GAF Engineering.
Who is, who is it?
Brian Grady, GAF Engineering.
Oh, Brian Grady from GAF Engineering, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice, go ahead.
All right, we've already had one meeting on this. I believe you're familiar with the project. The waivers were approved and the use variance, so I believe we're just left with the site plan. Considerations for the project, we did receive the review letter from Mr. Cudero, which we have provided a response, which you should all have. I can go through those quickly. Comments, we're asking for stamps from landscape architect and from a registered land surveyor, which we will provide on, on the final set of drawings. We made the change to the oil grit separator that was requested. And one of the other, one of the big issues, I guess, in the comments was this property has an access across the waterwiz, which you're familiar with. Mr. Cudero's question was, will there be cross traffic, for instance, traffic leaving the gas station going back to the waterwiz property? And that would become problematic, I believe, so we've added to the plan some do not enter signs if you were looking back to the waterwiz property and provide some striping and some do not enter lettering on the ground. I did speak with an engineer from the waterwiz projects months ago. He contacted me regarding the easement, and he said that they were working on a plan, their final plan for access for their property. He hasn't been back in touch with me, so I don't know what they're proposing. I did have a conversation with Phil today, and that was one of the topics we discussed. So the.
Let me choke before I.
Don't leave us too quickly.
It went down the wrong pipe, I'm sorry, and I didn't want to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Not a problem. So the way, with Phil and my discussion regarding the waterwiz access, when waterwiz comes up with a plan for their access to the site, that there may be an opportunity to work with them to maybe narrow the easement in the entrance. Veronica had some comments about trying to increase the landscaping, so when that becomes known and available, we may have the opportunity to.
Right now, you're forced to work with the information available.
Right, we have an easement, it's paved, it's there, the newly constructed curb cuts from Cranberry Highway are where they are, so we're using those. So without knowing or being able to work in conjunction with waterwiz, we've left that area wide open with the easement. So in the future, we may be able to make changes to that, working with them, once we know what's happening there. But for now, our plan shows that, no, we don't want access from our property going back against the traffic flow to waterwiz.
So while we're on that subject, and I'm going by memory here, so if I remember correctly, if we had two rectangles with a common line, one being waterwiz and one being this property, the easement is like a triangle across the front of the waterwiz property.
Correct.
And the curb cuts have already been made. Are the curb cuts taking advantage of that easement?
Yes, one of them is. There's, there's another curb cut within the easement, but it's at the point of the triangle, so it's really not usable for our purposes. It's usable for waterwiz.
That's why, that's why there might be an alteration on the easement.
Yes, so there's two curb cuts within the easement, then there's the main entrance to waterwiz that they have available to them. So there's really kinda three curb cuts on their property. So what they plan to do with their final access plan, I don't know at this point.
Two of them are within the easement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but one of them's at the point of the triangle.
So one of the two is way up at the very point?
Yes, it's unusable for our purposes, yes. But it's, it's there for waterwiz.
It's like a broken watch. It's right once or twice a day.
But it's usable for waterwiz, it's just not available for our purposes, correct. As far as us being able to use it through the easement rights, it's not available to our property.
Okay.
Couple of the other comments, additional test pits at the time of construction, we have no objection to that, that could be made a condition. Comments regarding the site being located in a FEMA flood zone. We are in a flood zone, coastal land, subject to storm flowage. Where it's coastal, there's no requirement for compensatory storage, and we will be making an application to FEMA with a letter of map revision based on Phil. So we'll raise the slab of the building above flood and the grade directly surrounding the slab above the flood. So in the future, we will make that application, which will remove the structure from the flood zone. So we'll ask, request for a change in the flood map, but that'll be in the future after construction's complete. And the project has received approval from Conservation Commission. I believe we just received the order of conditions today on that, so that will be recorded, so we do have that approval in place. And there was a question regarding the replacement of the chain link fence. We've clarified the intent about replacing the entire chain link fence and putting it in the location as shown on the plan. There's a couple of spots where it goes over the property line a little bit. If you're looking at the property from the street, it goes over the property line on that left property a little bit, so we'll correct that and bring it all back inside the property lines. And there was a question regarding the groundwater mounting analysis, which we've provided that answer. We've actually used a little bit more conservative estimate in the groundwater mounting, and I have not heard back from the fire department, so we are awaiting that answer.
So you don't know if you've got the fire department, okay, okay, yet?
No, I'm awaiting that answer. I haven't heard anything or received anything.
Do you wanna know that they can get their equipment?
Yeah, we've done the swept path analysis, it's in your, it's in your plan set, it shows that it meets.
You provided for it, but they just haven't blessed it.
Yeah, I haven't heard or had a formal response from them yet, no.
Okay. Okay, that it?
That's the response.
That's your response.
Our response, and Phil may have some additional.
Phil, you wanna, you have any additional, any, you must.
I have to say something.
You have to say some, you have to say something, you're gonna send us a bill, right?
Right, I mean, it's gonna be bigger now, I guess, just kidding. Phil Cudero from Allen &amp; Major Associates. So what Mr. Grady reflected is, is correct in terms of the comments that we had initially prepared. They did provide a response letter. As he outlined it, they've addressed a lot of the technical matters, but there's a few outstanding issues. I'll just bring them to the board's attention so you can make a determination as to how to act. For the drainage, they're proposing drainage in an area that was not tested for soil, so my recommendation to you in my final sign off letter, which, for the record, I again apologize, I sent you a new letter this afternoon based on the information we received from GAF, so it's, it's still fresh.
We got the letter, we have, just for clarification, for more than, not for you, but as much as for anybody on Zoom or in the room, the board has got a policy that when information comes in the day of or the day before a meeting, we've got a policy of that we will continue, we won't make a decision that evening. So that alone means we're gonna, but, go ahead.
We, I understand, so I just wanted to acknowledge that I'm beholden to that policy as well. In any event, I'm recommending that you consider a condition that they do additional soil testing underneath the stormwater systems on site, otherwise they will not meet the stormwater management standards. But there's no reason to believe that the stormwater, as they've designed it, will be problematic, given the consistency of the soil.
You just want something in the file that says it perks at the rate rate?
Yes, we want that for you, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Objection.
As Mr. Grady had pointed out, you know, our, our notes regarding the coordination with waterwiz was really born out of the desire to try to get some more landscaping on the property and not have as wide of an entrance as they show, or even the wide drive aisle between the curbed island along Cranberry and the face of the canopy. So our conversation today really centered around, is there any alternative to reducing those to increase some of the landscaping areas, given how densely covered the, the project is? He alluded to it correctly, because we don't know what waterwiz is doing in the future, they can't account for it today. And he also indicated that the drive aisle in the front of the site, the width of it is really born from the fuel delivery trucks because of how tight, how tight the site is. So my suggestion to the, to the board is if you are comfortable with the plans, which we are comfortable with them as drawn, is that they should update the plan set to include a swept path analysis for the fuel truck, since the, the dimensions of the site are born from that requirement, they really should be provided for record for the board to review. He also noted existing additions planned in LA plan are not stamped, those should be stamped. The fire department had not weighed in as of this afternoon, so we were going to recommend that you hold your deliberations, obviously, until he comes back. But that was really about it, a few considerations for the board, but the technical matters have been addressed at this point.
We're in pretty good shape, we need to cross some Ts and dot some Is.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I heard conservation, just 'cause we have somebody that, conservation's good.
Yes.
And Commissioner, anything that you need to add? Okay, anybody on the board with any questions?
I have, I do have a question. Do you know when waterwiz will? No idea, I mean, are we talking years, or months, or weeks?
I have no control.
You might have better knowledge of that. I, as I said, I received a call a couple of months ago from their engineer, who said he would get back to me when he has a plan, 'cause we do need to kinda work together, but I haven't heard anything since.
Yeah, because what, what was going on with waterwiz and, and the town, and we, that whole?
I don't know, is waterwiz in front of us right at the moment?
Has that been resolved?
Okay, okay, so my memory.
Right.
Which is potentially flawed, but rarely. My memory is that waterwiz was directed to perform a site plan review. Waterwiz needs a site plan review. Waterwiz said, yeah, okay, we don't wanna do it, and we're gonna jerk you around as much as we can and get through another season, and then we'll do it in the off season. And we said, yeah, okay, we'll get you, we'll let you get away with that. And then in the off season, they sold the property and they didn't tell the new buyer. So the new owner got this surprise information that, hey, you guys are required to do something. And they said, oh, yeah, well, we'll sue you. And they took us to court, and then they did some more research, and they said, oh, wait a minute, we're gonna lose this, we're gonna look like jackasses. So they withdrew their suit. So waterwiz is sitting there right now, and if I got this story wrong, somebody can raise their hand and say that this is a wrong story, but I think I'm close, in the Jimmy world. But people understand it when I say it this way. So now we're at the point where waterwiz has got another season almost under their belt. They know that this problem is theirs, due diligence is the, is the duty of the buyer, not the seller, and it's their problem, so they know they have to face this. So they're scrambling. So to get an answer out of the neighbor, which all this is, is the neighbor, the neighbor has no idea, and.
Yeah, I asked because I knew, I know a lot of what you're saying has been going on, and I didn't know.
That's right, and that's, that's where it stands, so.
Yeah.
So waterwiz, I don't think waterwiz wants to give this board or this town trouble, I just think they got blindsided. No, no, no attorney closing a real estate deal wants to say, oh, poop, I made a mistake. They don't usually say poop either.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd say you are highly accurate in your summation of that. The, the one caveat I would add was parking, obviously, is a big issue for waterwiz currently. They probably could use about half their lot for parking because of a isolated wetland that was in that back rear corner. They went to conservation to find relief for that. They're actually going to fill and replicate that well in somewhere else. So they're probably working on a new parking plan that utilizes a lot more area than.
So they're gonna end up with more parking if everything goes the way they hoped?
Correct.
And for the record, Josh Parity is the speaker, is the person speaking, that just, yeah, no problem. So that's good information. Does that help answer your question? It's kinda really, it's really not relevant to what's in front of us. I understand the reason for your question, that's why I let it go on so long, but it's really irrelevant to this application. They have to work with what's in front of them, and what's in front of them right now is what we're working.
Sure, I'm clear on that, I just, this is a discussion for the landscaping, which was, you know, is pertinent to the, to the property, so.
What else? Anything else, Phil?
No, sir. I have no questions.
On Zoom, any comments from Zoom? Anybody putting their hand up? Anybody in the room with any comments on this matter? Okay, all that said, I think the applicant and the town engineer are working closely together to give us a good finished product for the town. We have to, you know, we're gonna continue, we're gonna make a motion to continue, we're gonna come back in two weeks. Do you need any more than two weeks, anything you heard tonight that's gonna take more than two weeks?
No, I believe that should be good.
I wish we, okay, then, then let's make a motion to continue and see them on September 11. What's that, 11th?
Yep.
Let's stack the 11th up so that we'll have people here all night.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Okay, the motion's been made, and who seconds it?
Seconded.
The motion's been made and seconded to continue until 9/11/24. All in favor? I'm gonna start on the left, Chris?
Chris Conti, aye.
Myself, aye. Veronica?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and Richard?
Aye.
You're continued.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of all continued public hearings. For new business, the first one up is gonna be James Rath. Before I bring you up, is there anybody in the hall or anybody in here tonight that has to do with the Warren property? Could you just open the door and see if there's anybody out there for me? I got an email that was looking for us to entertain somebody. Nobody out there?
Nobody at all.
Okay, thank you, so I just wanted to make sure. So this is Rathburn, special permit, 35 Datewood Street. Give me a minute to get this stuff away and get your folder up in front of me. I'll read you in, and then we'll let you.
Was one of you out at my property today? I'm just curious.
Was one of us at our property? If anybody was here, it was probably Richard, the fella on Zoom. Richard, did you get out and get, do a drive by?
Yes, I did, sir.
I just wanna, I saw someone on the camera and just wondering, figured it was one of you guys.
Is he photogenic?
Well, the camera broke.
The camera broke?
I hope you got a, I hope you got the good angle.
Well, you just gotta know from one number.
I just think about that. Yeah, maybe, no, actually, the camera, the camera was faulty.
So, okay, I just wanna get this. I just want to get this put away before I take you out and... These guys are doing little tiny projects, you know? First order of business, we'll read this into the record, into the... Here's a couple here. Here's one for you. Sorry, Nazir, and Richard, you don't get a copy because I can't... Well, you got them online, if you want to look. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August 28, 2024, at 6:30 PM, in room 520 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 43-24 for a special permit to legalize the structure by seeking relief from the side yard setback under the Wareham zoning bylaws to James Rathburn Bun of 35 Datewood Street, Wareham, Mass., for an addition at the subject property located at 35 Datewood Street, Wareham, Mass. This would appear in assessors map 38 Lot 150 in the R30 zoning district. Go ahead, Mr. Rathburn.
So...
What do we got?
So this is a 20, an older project, built in 1930, '35, and back then, they had 20, 30, I'm sorry, 50 by 80 lots. I'm on the corner, I don't know if you can see that from the, from the, from the plan that I gave you. It was on a corner lot, and at some point...
It's a 50 by what?
50 by 80. The lots that it was originally built on, and it was four feet from that property line. That's where it originally was, if you count the overhang, which I think...
What was four feet from the property line?
The house, when it was built. It was originally built that way. Going straight back, it's an existing nonconformant. I'm not trying to go sideways at all. You'll notice that, right, if you look at the plan, at one point, that corner lot that used to go to the house beside it, which would have been Lot 148, was purchased by the owners of 150. So it kind of relieved that, for the most part, except right at the back corner, because of the way the, the way the lot comes down from the other side. It comes down in a weird angle.
Hang on, let me look at the, look at the assessors map here. I see this...
I got a simpler drawing that kind of shows it here, if you want to take a peek.
Hold it up, let me see what you got.
Just a simpler drawing. It'll, you can verify everything on this, on that, it's just kind of a simple...
Let me see what we got in the folder here. Just, that's why I read it in and let the other members look at your folder, but I didn't get a chance to look, so...
Okay.
You got pictures, you got fence, you got... The before, I see it, okay. And I see this strong tree engineering plan here, too, so...
That's correct. That gentleman earned his money. There's a lot of inconsistencies on, on the way the property was laid out.
This plan's not correct?
What's that?
This plan's not correct?
It's stamped.
Oh, it's stamped?
The inconsistencies are on the town, the town sign.
This plan and the town's plan don't agree, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay. So now I find here, this, this looks like a... What, what number is yours?
150 and 149. That was perjured.
150 and 149?
Yeah, one right next to it.
Okay. So it's kind of, kind of L-shaped-ish, if you will?
Yes.
So it's all been combined, it's all one lot now?
Uh, no, they still consider it two lots, I guess. I get, I get...
Well, nobody's ever sent, nobody's ever submitted a plan and recorded it at the registry combining them, but because of the size of the lots, they're combined?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I mean, they, they can't be sold, they can't be sold as two separate lots or built on...
Well, especially because some of the houses, there's decking on that part now, too, so yeah.
So, okay. So 149 and 150 is what we're talking about?
Correct. So originally, 150 was the original lot, so when the house was originally built up, they broke, they put it up against that, that line, so they put the driveway on the other side.
So Datewood, 150 faces Datewood, 149 is on the corner of Datewood and Parkwood?
Bingo.
Okay.
So it's that, it's that protrusion that's kind of given. I got a really good picture here that I don't think I submitted, because I couldn't find one, but I found a really good picture of what it, what it looked, looked like, without the tarp.
Can you, can you, can we have it?
You certainly can.
We'll share it amongst ourselves and...
So this is, this is the, this is the corner, right? You see, that's, that's the fence that you see with your plan. You're showing that that's a fence right there. Right at the corner, that's that corner?
Okay. That's, I don't want to do too much without it in, on the microphone, so I want to let these guys see it. 2009, you want to see this picture?
Most.
I'll let you see it in a minute, Chris.
Sure.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I'll ask you.
Go ahead with what you got to tell us.
So, I went to all the neighbors, I got no, no, no pushback from any of them. The, the, the one that would have had the most pushback, I would, would have been 148, and, you know, they, they were, I met with them at the property, and they were, they had no pushback either. Michelle, I can't, I can't think of her last name anymore, because they live in Florida most of the year. So I'm just looking to get the, since it's an existing nonconformant, and I'm not trying to increase the informant, I'm just looking to get the special permit to finish the property. So what I, what I was trying to do, is it's got a shed roof, and I was just trying to turn that roof, which is actually gonna relieve a little bit of that, that five feet when I do that, because it's gonna push it back. But I'm trying to turn the roof to an A, because the shed does nothing but leak.
So you got a shed roof, and you want to turn it into a...
An A-frame.
An A-frame.
Yep. And to do that, I had to square the house off to make it square, so that I could get...
But you're not changing the footprint?
I'm gonna change on the other side of the house, so that it'll support the A-frame.
Why changing the footprint?
Yeah. You can see it on, on the property. I'm changing the footprint on the other side, going towards my other neighbor, which I have 20 feet to that, to that property line, and I have 20 feet to the back. So the only, the only nonconformant is the corner of that post from that fence that I just showed you. That's the only thing that's out of conformance.
Let me read the notice from the building commissioner for a minute, I haven't had a chance to read it, sorry. Have you guys seen the commissioner's notice?
No.
Chris?
It's you.
I just want to make sure we all, yeah, I just don't, take a minute to...
Looks like there's, what, two notices? One on July 11th, one on June 25th?
That's because he had the...
It looks like there's about the same matter.
Well, no, the addition should have been on the size of the addition. He had, the, the strong tree had made a mistake, and I had him, he fixed it and sent it back.
Okay.
The, the assessors lot, wait, this is another fun thing. So the front of my property, they gave us, they took, they gave everybody 10 feet. Okay, so on this side, I had 80 feet, and on this side, I had 70 feet to that corner. That, that's in, that's in, that's in question, right?
Right.
Well, the town gave us 10 feet, and when they drew the new map, they put 90 on this side, and it left the 70 here, which drew that corner 10 feet closer to my house, right? So when you do the 70 feet now from 10 feet back, I used, I'm, used to have just a 10-foot difference between this side, and now there's a 20-foot difference. So it, it literally, whenever they changed the map, and, believe me, my surveyor went crazy over it, because he couldn't figure out what was wrong either, they drew that corner 10 feet closer. It really should have been, but it's, he says it's been precedent now, because it's been there since, you know, Jesus was a baby, I guess.
What's been precedent?
The, the new corner.
So...
To the town, the town...
What's this structure that was constructed on March of 2019?
That's, that's where we were trying to get it, get it legalized then. That's the same one.
You were trying to get that legalized then?
You can see the picture from 219. I know he used Google Maps, but, you know, Google Maps today doesn't even show what's there. It's like four, it can be four to five years old. I was going through a divorce, I didn't have control of the property then, so I'm not quite sure what around, what, what went total on in 219. I'm just trying to legalize it.
So there's a, so there's a structure that's been built without a building permit?
Correct.
And that's, and that's what's causing the violation?
Correct.
Okay.
It's, it's not really a self-standing structure.
And you've applied for a building permit, and it's been denied?
It's been denied because I cut it to five feet.
Okay. I think, any questions from the board at this point?
One more thing I'd like to, it's not inconsistent with that neighborhood either. I mean, it's not like, if you, whoever walked back there can, can attest, there's three tool sheds that are literally touching my fence, property lines on either side, two sheds. Parkwood seems to be, because of those skinny lots, everybody put two pounds of baloney in a one-pound bag.
So while we're speaking about baloney and pounds of baloney, I'm having a hard time trying to decide if this is hammer or baloney. So...
Nazir has his hammer.
What's that?
Nazir has his...
Nazir has his hand up.
Nazir has his hand up. Before I go ahead with my comment, Nazir's got his hand up, let's hear what Nazir has to say. He's pretty sharp on this stuff.
All right, through you, Mr. Chair. The question I want to ask, if that shed that was built illegally, or that shed roof, if you remove that shed, is the setback conforming? Do you have the 10 feet?
I have 19.2 feet.
How much?
19.2 to the back.
Answer to your question is yes. If he removes the shed, he has the 10 feet.
And now with the shed, what do you have?
I think there's, to the, to the back of my, to back of my tool shed? I'm confused.
The setback, setback, what do you have for setback?
What's the distance from their shed to the property line?
I don't know. Probably, probably, let's see.
Neither do I. Naz, I'm gonna interrupt you, neither do I. Hang on a minute.
Is it on the prop, on the, on the...
Here's, here's the problem I'm having so far. So far, you've told me that we've got this much room over here, and this much room over here, and stuff over here, and this doesn't fit over there, and it's hard to put that in this folder, because when I wave my hands above the folder...
Well, you've got the drawing there, it kind of shows...
It doesn't end up in here, and this drawing isn't working for me. So you've hired a surveyor, you've paid him a lot of money, let him give you a good plan, because I can't read this. It's too small, okay? I want to hear from the building commissioner, but the application process calls for you to bring me a real set of plans, and then eight or nine copies. You've got a bunch of copies, but...
It said that, I, I asked, so just...
Well, you asked, and I'm telling you what I'm gonna need.
She told me that, that they wanted a B-size drawing, and that's what I provided.
A B-size drawing?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
The big, that's the big one. You got, the rest of them are just little, and she asked for one that size, and that's what the, I mean, I, that's what the...
Well, he's used too much of the paper for all this other stuff, so you're gonna have to do something better for me. But anyway, I'll hear from the commissioner now. You had your hand up?
Sure. Paul Turner, building commissioner. First thing, we should be going off the certified site plan. So, if you'd like me to explain the plan that he has submitted? I can.
Okay, go ahead.
I can show it to you, so we can at least get to the third correct point to get started.
Yeah?
This section right here.
Yeah?
2019 was constructed without a permit. It did not exist. He says that it was there since 2014 in assessors code. He's incorrect.
So historical records, historical records and his memory don't agree?
No. So this is the record.
Okay.
So, this was built sometime in March of 19, satellite photographs.
In March of 19, it shows up on, on the photo, on the satellite? About.
18, there's no building.
18, it's not there, 19, it's there?
19 is there. April, the building department sees it under construction, puts a stop order on it, requests it to get a permit. He applied for a permit.
In what year?
19.
Okay. Five years ago.
Did not follow through with inactivity, only a permit was rejected. He proceeded to go ahead and finish building it. This is a picture from April of 2020.
That picture right there?
May I finish, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Going forward to 2024, bill inspector drives by the same address. He's building a second structure to square the house off, again, with no permit. He stopped it. He applied for a permit. He submitted this plan, and as I was looking at it, I came across that the other first one that was built in 19, which is incoaching on the setback, was never taken care of, was never permitted, it was never came for a zoning relief. So that's where we're at. We have two structures, no permits, no relief. They're brand new, or they were built by the person that had control of that property, which was this gentleman.
So, so, if there were no, if there were no permits?
Should be decommissioned.
If there were no permits, and they were built, how do you, do you go there, and you look and see what was built, and you decide if it was built right or wrong, or, don't you usually...
Not that far, but I do have a photograph here. He basically built it, there was probably a concrete slab there. This picture is in black and white, but it looks like basically he put down an approach.
Yeah. Isn't, isn't, I'll let you finish your comment. I'm just, I'm just trying to make sense of all this, that's all.
This is the condition of the addition that he built in 19. A patio, put a piece of wood on the ground for, for a sleeper, I guess, and built it.
Okay. I got you. So, sir, I think it's normal to submit a drawing of what you're gonna build and get permission to build it. You don't build something and then say, "Can I have permission to keep it?" So I'm gonna have a real hard time granting you relief. I personally, I can't speak for the rest of the board. You know, there's four other members, and they may say, "Oh, you know, give the guy a break, you know? He only broke eight rules," or nine, or whatever. But I personally can tell you that what I'm seeing doesn't look good. You got unpermitted structures. I think before we, I, I'm willing, I'm willing to leave this open. I, I'm speaking for myself. I'm willing to leave this open and let you come back in two or four weeks. And in the meantime, if you can bring a set of drawings to the building department of what's there, and they'll approve it and say it meets building code, and say they'd be willing to issue a permit on that if this board was willing to grant relief, I'd listen to you, but...
Commissioner?
Without that, I don't even want to...
So the, he's saying it's built, but the, the one he's talking about...
I saw pictures of structures that didn't, that don't have building permits.
There's no structure on the other side, it's just, it's just a frame. There's nothing there. He can come and look at it tomorrow.[1764.76] He can come and look at it tomorrow. There's no roof on it, it's leaking like a sieve, I've been trying...
In order for it to leak, it has to be a structure. So you're contradicting yourself in your own sentence, I'm having a hard time...
It has no walls and no roof. It has no roof. Has no walls, no roof. It, it, it's just a structure. When they told me to stop...
I got a convertible with no roof, it's still a car.
Okay, so when they told me to stop, I put, I put, I put a tarp on it, and I haven't done anything since they told me to, told me to stop.
So you put a tarp on what? On the, on the structure that doesn't exist?
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, what did I put the tarp on?
You're putting a tarp on something, and you said there's no structure there. So I'm sorry to say this, but I'm back to finding that you, I think I'm getting a baloney sandwich.
This is what's there. You can come out and look at it if that's what you want to do.
No, I, I think he wants to see a set of, I think he wants to see a proper application with a set of plans of what you're going to build. And if that means you have to tear what you built without permission off the house to do that, that's what you're going to have to do. To ask this board to say, okay, it's not fair to this board. That's my opinion. If somebody on the board wants to interrupt me and say, Jim, you're being harsh, stop me.
Nazzy has his hand up.
Who has his hand up? Nazzy, go ahead, Naz.
All right, through you, Mr. Chair. I didn't finish my questions. What I'm trying to get to, if that shed that's built without a permit. Now, it's very important that we decide if it's a variance or a special permit, or if it's not substantially detrimental, he could get it relieved through 1355, section 1355. The question is, I was trying to get to, if the shed doesn't exist, if the house was conforming, existing, conforming law. So it's definitely a variance to build that shed or make the roof on it, or whatever.
Excuse me, Naz. Nazzy?
Yes, yes.
Can you hear me, Naz?
Yes, I can now.
I've seen pictures, not of the shed, of structures built, there's more than just the shed in question here. So there's been, I just had a picture come up here and show me of a structure being built on grade where wood is on earth without any concrete under it. I mean, I know, I don't know the building code, but I know that don't fly, Naz.
Mr. Chair, yeah, my, let me go back to my subject. If the existing house, everything we see that was built illegally, if you take these out and the house has conforming setbacks, we cannot give him relief and act upon it as a special permit. This is my point. It's strictly a variance. You get my point?
I got you.
This is what I want to know. If you, if you remove, that's what I was asking, if these question, the existing house, what was the setback over there? The side setback is 10 feet. What is the setback with the house without the violations?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's not on the engineering plan, but I would, pretty confident that the house is non-conforming or be a special permit.
You feel as though it would be a special permit?
If you remove the structures that he built, would unpermitted structures that he built, remove it, I would say that it was probably seven to eight feet off the lot line.
Can you hear him, Naz?
Yes, I do. I do hear the commissioner. However, it's only, it only will be a special permit if the board feels so. So if the four, if the board feel it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, he's going to meet, he's going to have to meet the statutory requirement of a variance. Unless, but if the board feels it's not substantially detrimental, which is probably mostly the case, then we could act upon it as a special permit. But until he fix these plans and come up with serious measurements of stuff, I, I don't think we should, we should, like you said, we should continue and get some serious plan, two-by-three plan, so we could read them and all the stuff, stamped and all that stuff.
Okay. The commissioner wants to speak some more, Naz, and I'll, I'll listen to you again if you want to talk in after the commissioner. Go ahead, commissioner.
Yes, sir.
With certainty, I can say that that structure is not built correctly. And what I do have a big concern with is the house is rented out as an Airbnb. So people are renting this property, weeks, weekends, et cetera. Six, eight, nine, 10 people in the structure. They're renting this and assuming that the structure is safe. So now you have a, a building built, this one half-built. There's electricity in here, there's plumbing in here. Done by who? There's no permits anywhere. So someone rents this property, has a good time down in Wareham, and who knows what's going on back here? That's why we have a building department, permits. Not just build willy-nilly, then come here and ask for forgiveness.
So regardless of whether they grant me the special permit to build it, I still have to conform to whatever it is that you may conform to?
Correct.
Looking at this structure, it looks like it's on the dirt or on maybe a concrete patio that was there. You put down sleepers and built on. So right there from, you have no frost coverage. Take the whole thing down and start over.
I can do that, but I still need a special permit to move forward.
That's right, there's a procedure. I'm not going to speak to you, I'll speak to the board. There's a procedure. You need to get, apply for a building permit with real plans. I'm going to look at it, I'm going to take a look at it for zoning, and then I'm going to say it's in the setback, and you're going to need relief. Then you come see the board, and you, you give them your circumstances, present your case, and they give you relief, or they don't. But you don't start with no permits and just do it not once, but twice.
Recently, I want to add to the record, recently on August 26th, on a letter dated August 26th, addressed to this board, and signed by Diane King, president of the Parkwood Beach Association. It reads, "The Parkwood Beach Association held a regular meeting on August 24th, 2024." We're talking a few days ago. "The matter of a special permit for property located at 35 Date Wood Street was discussed by the Board of Directors. A vote was taken concerning this property, and the unanimous vote of the directors was no to the special permit. If there are any questions concerning this, please feel free to contact me." Having read that into the record and having earlier testimony saying, if the board finds it's not detrimental to the neighborhood, we can act as a special permit. This in itself tells me it tends to be detrimental to the neighborhood. So I'm, again, my position is, I don't feel like I'm acting on a special permit. I'm acting on a request for a variance. This has been advertised as a special permit to legalize this structure that's there. I don't even think the applica, I think the application and the notice is flawed. I, I can't entertain a vote on this other than to continue. I will entertain a vote to continue, but if not, then I'd entertain a vote to decline.
Can I ask a question?
Nazzy has his hand up again.
Go ahead, Naz. I'm going to let my board understand.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, through you. I appreciate the association in Parkwood. The association answer or letter, it's only a comment, has no bearing on zoning. So whether, it's up to the board to decide whether they, he could have a special permit or a variance, whatever the case. So it has no bearing on the vote, on zoning material.
No, agreed.
So it's only a comment. But again, the, the right way to do it, start from scratch, like the commissioner said. You go there, remove the violations, apply for a permit, he give him directions, and then from there, he come to us, then we go. He might not need various, or he might not need, who knows? Until we have an unwriting properly, we don't know what he needs. So the right path is the commissioner's path. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, and thank you for your input.
Can I ask why he said about my shed? I mean, that, that's been there forever. I'm, I'm confused by what, why he...
First of all, you direct all your questions to the board, the commissioner is... That's all right, no problem, it's all right. You're not, you're not an expert at coming in front of boards and we're not an expert in putting up with, I mean, listening to.
I was confused by his reference to the shed. I'm not sure what, why that, that...
Well, he, he was trying to, he was trying to find a way to give you some relief. He was struggling to try to find a way to help you. But I'm listening, and I couldn't, I couldn't hear it.
Oh, I couldn't.
I couldn't hear the, I, I heard what he said, but I didn't, I didn't see the plan. He's, he's trying to look at it online, and he's trying to, he was trying to help you out a little bit, but I think you also heard him say that he's, if he's going to vote tonight, that's two strikes, nine in his. I can tell you that so far. And you know how baseball goes.
Yeah, I do.
And there's only three other members here, so I've listened to the board members, or watched their heads go up and down, and hands, et cetera. I've also looked back in the room as we've been talking, and there's been a lady in the back of the room, and she's either flirting with me or wants to speak.
Before we do that, Jim, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, I thought you...
I don't think anybody on the board actually has had a comment yet, so I just...
Oh, okay, I thought you, I thought, I kept looking over.
I don't think so.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I don't think anybody has. So I'd like to just clear a couple of things up.
Nazzy's on the board, by the way.
This is true, this is true. You haven't gone around the table as, as we typically do.
Okay, go ahead.
So I have a question about, so we're talking about whether or not this advertisement has been correct. I'm reading the notice of violation and what was recommended by the commissioner, and what that says is that the applicant should seek relief for the side setback by the, within 30 days of the notice. It's my understanding that he is not here for the new structure that he's, has applied for, because that doesn't need a special permit, correct?
He applied for the new structure that would not have any zoning implications, except the building department will not entertain a permit on a property that has a zoning violation. So now that's going to jump us back to this structure that was built in 2019, the one in question with the side lot line.
Right, completely understood. So this is not in reference to the, the structure that he would be in conformance had he not had this little shed?
That's correct.
Okay, so this gentleman, because there's been talk that he should be reapplying, but reapplying for what? What he is applying for is for the side setback that has to do with the existing structure that is currently in place. That is why he is here, unless the advertisement says something different. I don't think this gentleman needs to make another application. I think we need clear drawings, I agree with that 100%. Needs to be bigger, we need to understand it, we need to decide whether it's a special permit, but I don't think he needs a new application. He does to the zone, to, to the building department, that's a separate matter, I think. But I think we can move forward on this. I would say continue because we don't have what we need for drawings. That's just how I see what's before me.
Commissioner, Nazzy has his hand up.
Go ahead.
Yes, through you, Mr. Commissioner, absolutely not. We can, if there is a violation, we cannot move forward with any decision until the violation's rectified. I understand what Mr. Beni is saying, but I know that's what's before us. However, we just have learned that there is a violation. Until this violation removed, it cannot be heard. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
So...
Hang on, hang on a minute. I got, the commissioner wants to respond to Nazzy's comment.
No disrespect.
You're not, you're still on Veronica, but, but, go ahead.
No disrespect to Nazzy, but I don't think he's understanding what... The structure that he built in 19 is what was advertised, and what is the issue? There's nothing to reapply. So his notice was to seek relief, so you guys could give him relief tonight, and then he'd have to deal with me to get a set of plans, which the only set of plans we're going to accept is this thing being removed with sonar tubes or a foundation under it and built correctly. So either way, it's going to come down. So if you want to give him the relief tonight, that would be your choice. But the violation is this structure. The one that he has under construction now, the 2024 structure, is unpermitted because when he applied for it, I discovered this one and stopped that one. The, Nazzy has it, has it backwards, sorry.
But I'm still, I'm going to let you finish, Veronica. I'm still confused. Are we given relief for the extru, for the structure to remain? Or are we given relief for the structure to be torn down and rebuilt?
Neither, I'm sorry.
In front of you is, can he put a structure where it's located on the set of plans that Strong-Tai...
Can he put a structure where one exists?
Where one exists, yes.
But, but that existing one isn't the one that we're going to approve?
No, it, it, I understand that.
So how can we, how can we grant relief on a structure that's not, that, it's not, it may, there may be a structure, existing structure there?
Yeah, and you could give it relief tonight, but then when I get a hold of it, it's going to be decommissioned.
But he would be able to keep the setback, as is on this drawing?
He'd be able to keep the setback and rebuild it.
Do you think there's merit in getting the setback approved this evening?
My personal opinion, the, the back and forth I've had with the applicant, I'm going to choose my words, and I'm going to keep it simple. I think the best thing that should be done here is both structures there should be decommissioned, cleaned up, then start over the correct way. Draw a set of plans, submit a permit, zoning determination, come see you guys, get your relief or don't get your relief, and then build a new structure. Everyone's doing it backwards.
That's...
That's, that's, that's the problem.
I'm, I'm going back to Veronica because she really had the flaw, but that's where, between, you know, my problem is, I don't want to give relief for something that's, in my brain, it's nonexistent because it's not permitted.
It's an illegal structure, that's correct.
So I'm given relief for something that's going to have to be torn down and put back up? What if we, what if he comes back with a plan that we don't like? Well, we've already given him the relief. You know, sometimes you look at something and say, oh my God, that's too tall, or, you know, that's too... I'd like to know what it is we're given relief for.
I'm just, I'm assuming the gentleman is going to want to use the same footprint when he gets correct drawings and is just going to come back to us with the same footprint. If we say to him, this is the footprint, you deal with the building commissioner, he's going to tell you either tear it down or do whatever it is, but...
I'm okay with voting on an assumption, if that's what the board wants to do.
An assumption of that he's going to...
Of what he's going, if you want to assume what he's going to do and vote on what you assume he's going to do as far as relief, if you want to make that kind of a motion, I'll vote on it.
Nazzy's going to stand up again.
Go ahead, Naz.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, thank you. Thanks for clarification for the commissioner. And I totally agree with the chairman, and I agree with the commissioner. You remove it, apply, come back. I will not, I, I, I gave my seat to Mr. Conti, but I disagree with granting any relief on a violation that exists. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. You still have the floor.
I don't need it, I've said, I've said what I needed to say.
Just because if I did forget to ask, do you have any comments, questions?
I do not.
Chris?
No, not at this time.
Richard, you're on Zoom, you're listening to our list.
Yep, I have no comment.
No comments, okay. I'm going to go back to the, the applicant wants to speak again, but I'm going to go back to the member, the other people in the room and give them an opportunity to speak first. That lady that confirmed she wasn't farting, she really wanted to talk. Come on forward, you have to say, you have to speak to a microphone, you have to tell us your name and address, and whether you're in favor or opposed, or whether you just wanted to hear your own voice.
Or whether I wanted to meet you. I'm Diane King. I am the current president of the Parkwood Beach Association. I'm on 4 Chestnut Street and have been there for 52 years. So there we have it. I, I am blessed and feeling very good about the quality of people we have up here making these decisions. And I just wanted to reiterate that the board feels that the side yard setback should really be looked at before it being granted, which I see that you will, because we feel it's going to set a dangerous precedent going forward. So we want you to really consider the fact that it's not on Date Wood Street, it is on Parkwood Drive. And if in future we wanted to put sidewalks, we could. Now, on the side streets, many of us have gone through the process of obtaining legal help by back that strip. In front of my own house, it was nine feet. But in the case of Parkwood Drive, we haven't done that. So we just want that to be out there, that it could be a safety impact situation at some point in time.
Torn forward, okay.
And that's what we were concerned with, is the going forward.
Parkwood Beach Association, is that a, you pay dues and you become a member?
Yes.
Is everybody in the association, everybody in the neighborhood automatically in the association? Or is it a pay-in members-only type of, so it could be checkerboarded throughout Parkwood? That some people are part of the...
Yes, three-fourths... Yes, three-fourths of the people are dues-paying members.
That, that was going to be my next question. How much of the, of the neighborhood do you represent? You figure you represent close to 75% of the neighborhood. What else would you like to tell us?
That's it.
Thank you for your patience.
But I thank you very much.
Thank you for coming up and speaking.
Thank you for your time and your expertise. It is much appreciated.
Anybody else in the room that would like to be heard? Okay, the applicant is squirming, wants to speak some more. Go ahead.
So what you just said is kind of true, but there's 87 feet between my house and the Parkwood Drive, because that's the other lot, 149, is in between us.
So.
If they wanted to buy 10 feet back, then I'd have 77 feet to Parkwood Drive. The only, Veronica here, the only relief that I'm looking for is to be able to build something five feet from that, from that setback on the corner of the irregular corner from lot 148, 147. And no matter, if, if the board gave me relief tonight, I still have to deal with him. And I can't go, I can't increase the footprint because you didn't give me relief for increased footprint. You give, you're, I'm not asking for.
So let me, let me repeat, let me repeat what's been told to you four or five times tonight, and hopefully you'll hear it this time. The way you get relief, when you want to do something, when the bylaw says something has to be three feet, or 10 feet, or 30 feet, or 100 feet, and you want to change that rule to meet your plans, you draw what you want to do, you pay professionals to draw it if you really want to make a nice drawing, you bring it to the building inspector, or the commissioner, or both in order, and they say, nope, you can't do it. It doesn't meet the bylaw. And you go, huh, why did I spend all that money? I'm going to go give the town some more money. And then you come and you do an application and you come to the zoning board of appeals and you say, I asked to draw this and they said no because it doesn't meet the bylaw. And then we can give you relief. But that's the order you do it. First, you buy the cart, then you hook the horse up to it. So you've got to come back, we're willing, we've told you multiple times, we're willing to continue and allow this appeal or this to stay active. But during the time between now and when you come back, you've got to go make nice with the building department. And there better be more stuff in this file so that we understand what we're granting relief to. I can't just say, yeah, sure, go ahead, build whatever you want within four feet of the property line. I can't do it in good conscience. If you come to me and show me a plan that looks beautiful and I think it's enhancing the neighborhood, and the association hasn't come and said, no, we don't want that, and the neighbors haven't come and said, no, we don't want that, then I'm going to look at your plan and I'm going to say, well, this, maybe this has merit. Maybe this is going to make the neighborhood better. But I can't say to you, yeah, sure, do whatever you want within four feet of the property line. If it's good, they'll like me, and if it's bad, they'll hate me. I can't do that. So you've, 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 you've got to, you've, you've kind
Right, I can move that thing in five feet and just build, just get a permit, you know, build what I want and don't come back here, correct?
Again, you know, you're talking to the commissioner, you're here in front of the board. I understand it's, it's a normal, it's a, it's a, it's easy to do. You want, you, you need to deal with him, but you're dealing with him in the, in the wrong manner.
Okay.
You need to, what you really, what you really need to do, my best advice to you, if, and free advice is worth what it costs, zero. My advice is free. You do what you want. But my advice to you is to say, board, I'd like to continue this.
Board, I'd like to continue this.
If two weeks or four weeks, whatever you think it's going to take you, if you want to come back in two weeks with a drawn plan and having spoke to him and made nice nice with the building department, and then what's in front of us, if you don't think you can be ready in two weeks, then ask for four. You can ask for two and then in two weeks, if, if you're not ready, we'll give you another two.
All right, two weeks.
Do you want two weeks? He's, we got a request by the applicant to continue for two weeks.
I'll make a motion to continue for two weeks.
So it's been moved by the board to accept that request. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
It's been seconded, moved and seconded to continue until September 11th. All in favor, starting with you over there. Well, Naz, wait a minute, before we vote, go ahead, Mr. El Khlaasi.
You're muted, Naz.
You, you hit your microphone or something, Naz. We're not getting you. You're muted.
Yeah, sorry. Mr. Chair, through you, our policy is two weeks to have some plans before us, so we could act upon it. If he has only two weeks, he's not going to be able to do the plans tonight. So he's going to need some time to go prepare everything and put it online or, you know, or download it, whatever. It's not going to be enough time for us to review it.
You want two weeks, you want to give him, you want to give him two weeks to get it done and then give us two weeks to review it before we talk to him again?
That's our policy, Mr. Chair.
Ah, you're correct. You're correct. So that would make September 11th kind of a silly continuance and, and we've got somebody else over there in the corner that's pretty sharp on this stuff in the audience. So let's make it September, what were the next?
25th.
25th.
26?
Fifth.
25?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is James Ruden.
I'll re.
25, 24.
Restate the motion to continue to September 25th.
Okay. It's been moved and it's been seconded still.
I second.
Yep. Okay. All in favor, I'm going to start with you, Richard.
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
And Chris Conti, aye.
And Naz, I know you're not voting tonight, but.
No. No, I'm not voting.
Okay. So you're continued. You don't have to come back before us until the 25th of September. I wish you luck. I hope you can work things out, get a plan that works for you. We'll talk to you then.
Okay, please, we need to run talk to you tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
We're here at 7:30.
Okay, the next thing in front of us is Frank and Jennifer Graziano, 4424 Special Permit and or variance on Acorn Street. Can I have the, anything from this last one back for the floor? But thank you. Does it, does this go in, is this part of that or?
Could be, could be. Yes, actually.
Thank you, thank you, Chris.
While you get ready, Mr. Commissioner, may I speak?
He did it.
Somebody wants to, go ahead, what is it?
While you get ready to switch and read the petition into order, may I speak about this, or do I have to wait until the public, it's read?
I'm sorry, this is a person that's online that's speaking?
Richard.
This is Richard. Richard's talking.
Richard, I'm sorry, what do you want to know, Richard?
I just wanted to know if I could sum up the job.
Oh, 4424?
Up a little bit while you're getting ready to read it into order, or do I have to wait until you read it in?
I'd rather have it read in first and then if you have something, you've, you've been by the property, you have comments? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Let me read it in, Richard, and then before I even hear from the applicant, I'll let you speak and then I'll hear from the applicant. How's that?
Thank you.
Did you hear what's going on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't know if that's good or bad. I don't know if he's going to throw you under the bus or if he's going to bring you to heaven, but.
We'll roll the dice.
Let's see what we got here. This is 4424. I'm going to throw your, your file over at the members present so they can be reviewing it while I'm reading. And the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August 28th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 44-24 for a special permit and or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628, and Article 13, Sections 1352 and 1353 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Frank V. and Jennifer A. Graziano of 956 Pleasant Street, Stoughton, Mass., proposing to expand existing 12-foot by 7-foot deck to 20-foot by 7-foot located at 1 Acorn Street. This appears on Assessors Map 2, Lot 218, in the Anzit Village 2 zoning district. And per previous conversation, Richard, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this job, what it has is a one-story porch, closed-in porch with a roof on it, but the second floor of the main house is setback from the porch, which has a deck out over the roof line, which is just sitting on the roof, which is not safe. So they're going to go through the whole process of rebuilding it and making it safe. So what they're looking to do is just, while they got it, a permit going, and they're doing all this work, they would like to just extend the deck to the right a little bit, 10 feet, and have a much more pleasurable deck up there. And it's not encroaching, it's not detrimental, it's not blocking anybody, and as far as I can see, they're doing the right thing.
You went by and you looked at it, you took the time and you felt good enough about it that you wanted to say that before they even stated their case?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your ever diligent willingness to go out and look at these things before the meeting. Go ahead, Mr. or Mrs., or both?
I'm Ed Levine. I'm the contractor.
Okay.
This is the homeowner.
Okay.
Jennifer. I think in this case, a picture is going to say a thousand words. I provided a picture of the front of the house in the packet that everybody has, and it shows the deck that's on the roof, porch roof, that's 12 by 7. They have a family of four. They can't even fit everybody on the roof at the same, on the deck at the same time without playing musical chairs to get in and out of the house. It doesn't make sense. We're going to tear it off to re-roof the house anyway. So we'd like to just extend it to the right, staying within the footprint of the gable side on the house. And it'll actually be eight feet from the property line. The house is 3.9 feet from the property line. If this is possible, the deck will be less non-conforming than the non-conforming footprint of the house. And I believe that it wouldn't be detrimental to the neighborhood. And I also have the head of the Beach Association, Mr. Gary.
Lerner.
Lerner, that came with us tonight in full support. And out of the 28 butters that we sent out registered letters to, we haven't received any negative feedback whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. And have you guys had a chance to read the bill commissioner's response yet? Anybody? Okay, they're reviewing it. Let me just look at this for a minute. Did you want to do any speaking?
Oh, no, I'm all set.
Sorry to point at you.
No, it's fine. Thank you.
I know it's not polite, but that's the one thing, that, one of the things that I've never been accused of too much, you know. I'm sorry, I received. Okay. So is it really and truly just the deck that you're getting?
Yeah, we're going to strip and re-roof, which is part of the permit.
Are you going to?
But we have to tear the deck down to get to the roof and the deck. The joist hangers are all rotted from the salt air. They didn't use stainless steel joist hangers. And we're going to build one up to code. And again, with a family of four, when you come out of the slider, if you put four chairs out there, you're basically playing musical chairs just to.
I'm looking at the picture. So the deck is the unsafe condition. The roof is structurally able to?
Oh, yes. The roof is fine. And we're going to strip and re-roof. And again, we'll be working with the building department on the inspections of the framing. But we'd like to extend it so they can get full enjoyment out of the roof deck. It makes sense.
For me to understand it, this is a conventional roof, and you're going to put sleepers on it or something and then?
Yes. The only reason we're here is because the house is three and a half feet from the property line on the beach.
And when you move the deck, you're, you're exacerbating a nonconformity.
More nonconforming. But in actuality, the deck is still eight feet from the property line and within the perimeter of the gable, not blocking anybody's view.
And it's going to be the same thing, a deck like that with, with white pickets?
Same footprint, only we're extending it eight feet.
No roof over the deck up there or anything like that?
Not whatsoever.
Not at this time, anyway.
No.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions?
Nope, I understand what they're trying to do.
Naz, or Richard?
Nope.
Nope, send my piece.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that this is not detrimental to the neighborhood.
The motion's been made, this would be non-detrimental and therefore we could act on it as a special permit, not a variance.
Should we ask if anybody, anybody in the audience or close the hearing first?
Not on this matter. We will before we close. We're not closing the hearing, we're just working on what, I, I get your point in it, but do I have a second on that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This is, this would not be detrimental to the neighborhood. I guess before we vote, is there anybody here that's going to be coming shouting on Zoom or in the room that's going to come tell me whether this is a detriment to the neighborhood? Just don't want to vote on it. You made a point. Okay. So it's been moved and seconded that this is not detrimental and we should be able to act on this as a special permit. All in favor say aye, starting with you, Richard.
I, just one quick question. Do we close the public hearing or we just?
No, no, we're not closing the public hearing. We're just, we're just deciding that this can be acted upon as a special permit.
Aye.
Then we'll beat the thing up to death if we want.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Chris Conti, aye.
Myself, aye. Okay. So as a board, we voted that if we act on this, we're acting on it as a special permit. You're not going for a variance. Now, further discussion on what's being done. Any comments from the board? Any comments on Zoom? Anybody in the room that has a comment in favor or against this behavior?
I'm in favor.
Come up, say your name, and your yes or your no, or your?
Gary Lerner, 2 Acorn Ave. I'm in favor of it. All right, it's not going to hurt anything. It's going to make the property look better.
Do you think it's an asset to the neighborhood?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Anybody else? That said, I guess all we need now is a motion to close and then the board can take a vote.
So moved.
The motion's been made to close the public portion of this hearing.
I second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Conti. That means that once we vote, nobody can speak other than the board amongst themselves, and we'll then make a vote. All in favor say aye, starting with you, Richard.
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Chris Conti, aye.
Okay. So the public portion of this hearing is closed. Any more discussion amongst the board? Does anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
The motion has been made to approve the plans as presented per, I don't even know if we have to say per plans, as presented. Do I have a second?
Chris Conti, a second.
Moved by Veronica DeBene, seconded by Chris Conti, to approve and grant relief in the form of a special permit. All in favor, Richard?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Chris Conti, aye.
You're done.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Graziano, Special, go ahead. Okay. Cambray Highway LLC, Special Permit, variance, safe plan review, 2406 Cambray Highway. You've been patiently waiting all night, folks. And we'll get you read in momentarily. There is, there are bundles here with all kinds of big plans. Do I need all this? Do I just need the...
I have half sizes if you don't already have them.
You have half, okay, I think we're good. I think we're good, okay. I see what you did, you gave us three biggins and three littleins, or three 11 by 17s or something like that. Okay. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August 28, 2024, at 6:30 PM in Room 520 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 45-24 for a special permit, comma, variance, in parentheses with an S, variances if needed, and a site plan review from the requirements of Article 16 and Article 15, Section 1520, to the 2406 Cranbury Highway LLC, care of William F. Madden, P.E. of GAF Engineering, Inc., of 266 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to... redeveloping the property for use as offices and vehicle storage within the reconstructed buildings that the property located at 2406 Cranbury Highway, Wareham, Mass. This appears on Assessors Map 108, Lot A, in the industrial zoning district.
Great attorney, Gillian Moran, here, representing the applicant, 2406 Cranbury Highway. And we do have Mr. Higgins here as well, so if there's any specific questions in regards to the site, just to acclimate you, this is the Nissan Bakery, very fond memories there, getting our outlet bread. And Mr. Higgins has been helping develop this whole area. We got the Popeyes approved, obviously Noria came, Rojo, so this whole area has been really redeveloped. This space in particular has, obviously it was run down, he's fixed it up if you've been by it. And what we are looking to do and where before you is that we need a use variance in regards to the fact that we're going to have office space, and then we're going to have storage of a car collection. So we have this accessory use, and in our regulations, it can't exceed 40%. So the commissioner's letter is saying that it's going to be approximately 66%. So we need to seek a use variance from you all to see if this is appropriate for the neighborhood, which we believe it is, as well as it's a safeguard, too. I think one of the things that I would think if I was on the board would be in regards to, okay, they're putting cars there, are they trying to do a motor vehicle service center? We know we've had issues with that kind of thing, but we are going for, it's going to be storage for the cars, it's not going to be motor vehicle, any sort of repairs or anything as far as oil change, anything like that. So this area on Cranbury Highway is really appro...
Well, excuse me?
Yeah.
No retail repairs, no to the public, no bring my car there and get...
No, it's all his personal property, yeah.
All personal.
No, this is not a...
The guy stores his car there, if he wants to vacuum it out or change the oil, he's going to do that, but he's not providing services to the public.
Correct. Yeah, it's his personal property.
I just want, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I guess the suggestion would be if you find this appropriate, that could be a condition, if that's something you're concerned about, right, of specifically saying that it wouldn't be a motor vehicle service center, however you want to do it in a decision. And so we have a site plan in front of you, which I will let Mr. Madden go through, but I don't know if people have walked the site, if they have specific questions about this, but he'll speak to the site itself. We haven't done, it's really the same footprint, but we're making improvements landscaping, so I'll let Bill go into that, and I'm happy to answer any questions in regards to the use variance, and it's clearly appropriate on Cranbury Highway, and having office space, I believe, is great use, and obviously it's bigger because of the cars that are going to be going in there. So that's why it's 66% versus the office space.
66% of the structure will be office?
66% is going to be the cars, antique car storage, and the other, do some math, 34% will be...
Thirty, yeah, yeah.
Right, am I right? Okay. 34% will be the office, so.
And so how big is the building in total?
You answer that.
Um, I don't know, 7, it's under 7,500 square feet, around 7,000.
Doesn't need sprinklers?
Doesn't need automatic sprinklers, no.
Based on size?
Correct.
We could probably impose them based on use if we wanted to be stinkers.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, but perhaps you could...
Yeah, yeah, I get you, I get you, I'm just, I'm just, okay. So why are we in front of us? Because it's a change of use? This is the primary thing you want, is the change of use?
Well, because the accessory use is more than the primary use. So that's one of our bylaws, Article 16 definitions in the letter, in your packet, you should have this letter, the commissioner can go through it as well.
I get it, I get it.
Yeah, so there's a variance for that, as well as this special permit site plan review. This site has existing conditions, you know, we're not adding anywhere as far as the footprint of the building. I know that Mr. Madden spoke to the fire department, I don't know if we have a physical letter about it, but as you can see, you can go around the building, this isn't changing at all. So we have stormwater management, I'll let you go into all that. So I'm going to flip to the engineer now unless there's any use questions.
Okay, I think Mr. Chairman, you asked about the site plan review, part of the letter from the building commissioner cited in it that there was a requirement for 10 parking spaces for the office portion, and he suggested also that one, well, five spaces for the storage facility. So by virtue of us having a project involves 10 parking spaces, that would trigger site plan review for it. And as you've seen in a couple of other projects, it's really repurposing redevelopment of this existing site, and we've tried to comply with, well, we've included portions of the site plan review requirements throughout the entire site. So we've added landscaping, we've added some site lighting, we've reduced the amount of pavement on the property and what have you, we've modified the stormwater management system to bring that up to speed, we're removing the old stormwater system and replacing it completely with new stormwater. So, you know, quite a bit of work has been, is planned to be done on the site for the sole purposes of bringing it up to speed. But in any event, it's about a .9 acre car, so 2406 Cranbury Highway, the lot area is roughly 39, 30,000 square feet, or 38,800 square feet. And as I previously stated on the parking, where we have a parking table on the front sheet that indicates that we need one per 250 square feet for the office area, which is 2,500 square feet, that equates to 10. And then we've shown, we've shown two parking spaces for the, for the storage area of the vehicles. Building commissioner suggested five. We were looking at from the point of view that owners' antique cars are going to be stored in there, really not going to need more than, more than two people there that would be dealing with those cars. And there's also adequate space on the site to add three additional spaces if the, if the zoning board was so inclined to want us to have five as opposed to the two parking areas. So I'll just briefly go through the plan, cover sheet indicates here a photograph, a locust map, and the zoning data table, we're in the industrial zone, as Gillian mentioned. Most of the things are going to remain on the site. One of the key features is that we've actually reduced the impervious nature of the site by about 30%. It was 95% before we undertook the project and implemented these design changes, and now we're at 65%. So we brought ourselves from non-compliance with respect to lot coverage in that zoning district to being fully compliant with the lot coverage requirements in that zoning district. 70% is allowed, and we're down to 65% right now. So that involves removing all the old pavement and adding new. The second sheet is our standard sheet of general notes and details. We did dig some test, new test pits on the site. The existing drainage that was at the rear of the property exhibited a few characteristics that, you know, made us believe that the water table might be higher than what people anticipated in that area. Went out there and dug the test pits, and seems to indicate that we have no water within 10 feet of the ground surface there, although the old leaching basins that were there had some sediment inside of them, and impervious layers formed, and gave a false impression of where water was, because the water in those structures at that time was a little bit higher. So we opted to modify the entire drainage system and become fully compliant with stormwater management standards as we're required to do under your site plan review requirements. The third sheet indicates the current site as it presently exists. There's existing access off of Cranbury Highway to the north and to the south. You might also recall, I believe you guys probably permitted these storage units that are immediately to the north on the site. Rojo's car wash is in the back, Popeyes will be over here, Noria's down at the corner by Toe Road. So currently, it's complete, has essentially complete vehicular access around the perimeter of the building. Septic system, which has a Title V inspection board, is located in the rear, it's sized properly for the intended use.
So it's not, I mean, it's on, it's got its own Title V system?
It's on a Title V system, yes. Those other buildings that are like Rojo's, Popeyes, Noria's, that was all part of a municipal collection system extension that went out to Toe Road and...
They're all on town sewer, but this is not?
We're on town sewer, we're on individual Title V septic. This plan also shows the existing condition, a tight tank was put in place on the site initially with some previous building modifications that took place in the office area, so we noted as such. There's more to show with that a little later, but essentially, the entire property line is bounded with the tuminous concrete, black asphalt. So on the, on the west, easterly side, rather, there's some brimmed curving that is existing down there, a small height of ready rock or tin wall, back property line is just the end of the pavement, and these circles indicate the leaching basins that are proposed to be removed. There's only one catch basin on the entire site as it exists today, most of the drainage, all drains to this small corner. We split it up a little bit, not terribly different, I think we did more like half and half on each end of what we're, what I'll show you is proposed. But that's the existing site, there's no landscaping, there's no lighting and what have you. Fourth sheet indicates the demolition that'll take place. Due to the nature of the pavement, the pavement's pretty well deteriorated, not in very good shape. Part of our test pit information that we provided indicated that there's about two to three inches of pavement on the parking lot, and about four inches of base that supports it. I think it might be a little deficient in supporting structure for that, for that pavement. So we talked with the applicant, and we're really going to strip out all the unsuitable material and, you know, build it from the ground up in proper form. So this sheet indicates what we're really looking to do here. You'll see that we have 10 parking spaces, 12 parking spaces, rather, along the front of the, front of the building, that'll, that'll service the office area. It's divided on the plan with a dotted line, that'll show the 2,500 square feet for the office. To the, to the right of the dotted line is the, is the car, truck collection storage here. There's four overhead garage doors on it, so that would constitute like four bays if it was to be used as a, as a commercial type facility, which it is not, it's just four bays for access. Likely to see perhaps some internal racking for some vehicles inside there, but no lifts that we're aware of that'll be there for maintenance or mechanical work. So our pavement extends up to the side of the, up the side of the building headed to the north. What we wanted to do is provide fire department access and complete access around the site. So the pavement that exists where the leaching field is, will remain as is currently. Everything else that showed shaded would, would be new. What we proposed to the fire department, and they agreed with, was the fire department access to the, to the site, and what is required is they're required to be able to pull a fire department first response vehicle to within 50 feet of a door that provides access to the interior of the building. That's pretty easily done here. This is the fire truck access plan, it's on sheet number eight. So we show how the fire department access can enter in from Cranbury Highway. If they need to access the building through the front door, the front door is immediately adjacent to the driveway, there's a fire lane marked off there for a fire apparatus to park on, emergency vehicles to park on. And then they can drive forward up into the, headed toward the mini storage, and then back down into this tail, so they can pull right out of the, out of the driveway. So it's a three-point turn type of situation, but nevertheless, it provides them with that opportunity to, to deal with their fire department apparatus without having to back out onto a public way.
Now, the fire department likes to park in the public way and stop the traffic.
Yeah, well, I mean, first things first, and emergency services, I think, come before traffic, and, but we, I think that they're happy with the way we facilitated their needs here. This plan also indicates where the, where the industrial wastewater holding tank is. We also have an MDC trap. When we're in an unsoured area, and we have floor drains in a, in a garage, whether it's commercial or not, plumbing code requires floor drains in any building that has an overhead garage door on it. So we're indicating floor drain piping system coming out into an MDC trap, and that will in turn discharge into that holding tank. Holding tank is provided with proper controls, back to the main office inside the office building, that will advise the operator when that tank is like, say, 60, two-thirds to three-quarters full, they'll know that they need to get it pumped out and what have you, and that's, that'll be pumped out by a licensed hauler. That'll be considered non-industrial waste, non-hazardous industrial wastewater, because the pretreatment device is the MDC trap.
So is it, is it tight, or, I mean, if they were, if they just spilled water in there and filled the tank up with water, would they have to pump the water out, or is it more like a grease interceptor or a trap?
The trap is the, is the circular structure there, and that's where any oils, greases, and what have you, unsuitable materials would separate out. And then it has a, an outlet pipe that is at a 45-degree angle, is detailed on the plan, that keeps the floatables in that MDC trap, and the fluid that is added to the, to the MDC trap flows out below the level of the floatables and above the level of the solids on the base, so.
So it can go out and percolate into the...
No, it's actually a double wall tank that's out there with the proper control, so I would say that it's a virtual possibility for that to occur.
Oh, okay.
It's done the way it needs to be done by D E P standards. So, so anyway, we show several light fixtures, they're on the landscaping plan, but there's pole-mounted light fixtures, three of them along this main piece of parking lot, I think there's another one showing over here, four total, that illuminate this, this parking area for safety purposes more than anything else, and add a little bit of, you know, security to the site when viewed from the, from the street. We don't show any lighting at the, at the rear of the property. The rear of the property is essentially going to be our stormwater management system, so we're going to take half of the building, the roof in the back area, a part of the drive-through, and we're going to run it through a small seven four bay, which we need to do for pretreatment, and then we're going to discharge that into underground leaching chambers. In similar fashion, we'll do that on the southern lean as well, another four bay will be... Another four bay will be placed there and will overflow from this four bay into those, um, into those chambers as well. So, they've been, all been designed to accommodate the 100-year storm. Our water table is pretty deep down there and the soils are the, the good, um, very coarse carbon sand. So, we have suitable soil, suitable water table separation, actually ideal location for stormwater management to be, uh, be located there. We also show us just one galley in the front. Small piece of drainage will, will occur in the front. This, uh, paved area is gonna become landscaped now. It's gonna be grassed, um, landscaped area in the front of the building. Um, there's a new sidewalk, well, there's a new sidewalk in the front and there's sidewalk along the side. Uh, we show our handicap parking across the driveway with the appropriate crosswalks and what have you and access to the, to the building. This is the plan number, number seven that indicates what we're proposing for landscaper. So, adjacent to the Popeyes, there's, we show four street trees, some shrubs and some ground cover type planting. Schedule up here indicates the number of plants, fair number. I think there's, um, I don't know, 40 or so shrubs of that nature. And then along Cranbury Highway, we've done some, um, clusters of plantings as well to give, uh, give it a little bit of a better look from, from the main road. More consistent with what everybody has up there now. I think it's a good improvement to the area. That's pretty much it with this plan. We flank the driveway with a couple of trees, so there's five trees proposed, shrubs in the ground cover plantings, uh, in the, in the lights. The lights are gonna be on, from, from, from green, they're 18-foot poles with, um, lights that are properly shielded and screened and what have. There'll be LED lights, but they'll have cutoffs and, uh, there'll be no, there'll be dark sky compliant, there'll be no light source contamination off-site. The erosion control plan was set up. We're gonna retain a portion of this driveway entrance out to Cranbury Highway until such time, when this finished paving is gonna be done. So, we'll use that existing pad as our tracking pad. We'll take all this out, we'll envelope the site basically with erosion control, which will consist of a silt fence and straw wattle and that'll confine any, any material from the site, um, to the site. Shouldn't be any opportunity for it to leave the site because we're down in a little bit of a basin. This property line that's adjacent to the, um, self-storage, you know, their fence is about, I'm gonna say it's pretty close to 10 feet off the property line up slope. So, there's a small burn that's associated with the, okay, storage facility that looks as though it's part of the site, but it isn't. So, when you go out there, if you bend out there, you'll see that it has the, um, I don't know, fire smoke, stump grating, there's something along that slope to protect it from eroding onto this, this piece of property. It's performing pretty well as far as I could tell when I've been there. And, you know, pretty much that's what we're proposing on this site. As you might recall, you know, we've run into this a couple of times with rehurposing and redevelopment of additional, just new sites. And it's always been a question is, you know, do we meet the full standard of site plan review or do we do, you know, a redevelopment kind of project and, and touch on what's required and make it look better than what it was? And I think that we've achieved that with the site and it's, uh, looks to be pretty nice. It's done a good job out there, the work that's been done. I think the final work will, uh, will even better.
Be the lipstick?
Yeah, no, it's, it'd be very nice.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just to echo on that piece of it, um, you know, looking at the site plan review and, and what we're trying to do here, I appreciate this applicant getting this all together for you beforehand, you know, having Bill go through all these, fixing the drainage, all of that. So, as far as the process and, and looking at some sort of peer review, I mean, it's still up to you if that's necessary.
I think...
It's, it's, again, it's up to you.
I'll let the board chime in. I'll let other members of the board, I don't know if Nas and, Nas might have signed off. Must be 3 o'clock in the morning for him right now, but I think I'd like to protect the applicant and do the, I, I know it's, it's more money, but I know, I think I'd like to do the peer review. Our peer reviewer has been very fair. He doesn't, he doesn't just look for ways to run his bill up, in my opinion, and what I've observed. And I think you guys have done a terrific job in addressing anything that he'd be concerned with. But if we let the peer review it and he goes, "Nice job," everybody's protected. If we don't do a peer review and somebody has a problem in the future, we all got egg on our face. So, I, I don't, I'm, I'm personally not inclined to waive the peer review. I know that's where you're going.
It's not a requirement.
I know it's not a requirement.
And the other piece of it, I would, if that, that is gonna be the route, I would ask for a limited scope and not necessarily the full that I've seen. Um, of, I, yeah, I believe Alan and Major has done an excellent job, but this is, I think, a limited scope and review, you know, as far as disturbing and how that's all going. So, but that's up to the board.
We have, um, anybody on the board who have any questions at this point?
I do have some questions. So, this is, um, the office space is gonna be associated with, um, car collector business? Yeah, so the cars are gonna be stored in the back and the car collector business is gonna be in the offices in the front?
No, the, uh, the office operation will be separate from the, the car operation. I, I forget the line of work that the, the owner of the building is, is in, right?
I don't think you do wanna, I don't know what you want to disclose. Essentially, it's his collection, it's not...
It's his private collection, the owner's, business owner's private collection.
I think what I'm, I think what I'm hearing, and we have somebody willing to come up here, but I think what I'm hearing is that it's gonna be two separate things. The collection's gonna be in the back and out front, he's gonna rent that space out to another whole business. It's, it's not, that's not a, am I wrong or go ahead?
Yeah, my name's Mickey Higgins. I'm the owner of the property. I would just like to clarify, there's a gentleman, an individual, his name is Ted Parker, he's buying the property, it's under contract. His primary business, he and his daughter run a property maintenance business. So, they'll use the office to run their property maintenance business. Currently, they're located in Avon, Massachusetts, and they're relocating their business down to this area. The car collection is his personal car collection. He's not leasing the location to some, somebody else. It's his, but that's not, that's not, that's just storage of the cars. So, he runs his property maintenance business in the office and he stores his private collection in the, and that's what, that's what attracted him to the building.
Okay, yep, thank you. Um, I, I was just reading the, um, building commissioner's letter and it sounded like the office space in the front was gonna be used for, uh, car business to, and that's what I was getting at, to see if they were selling cars there. But no, you're not using it like that.
And, and just to be even more specific, we keep saying car collection, car collection, car collection. I believe his niche or his, his interest is antique trucks. I believe he, he collects trucks. That's his thing.
So, so you won't be charging storage like to public there to store their collectible cars, right?
As far as I know, there's no plan to sublease storage space out, none.
These are things you could put in your decision, you know, and if something in the future comes about, they'd have to modify it and come to you.
And I have one more question?
Yeah, go ahead, keep going.
The commissioner recommended 10 parking spaces for office and five for the storage. You have 12. You said that you could add three more back in to the plan. Where would you add them? Over in the grassy section over there, continue down?
No, I think that, um, you know, we could actually add them, we could add a couple more spaces back here, someplace that's just below the, um, you know, we could, we could add some space, two, two or three spaces here or here, or we could even extend out this parking area where the, the ten are and add a couple more there. So, there's, you know, there's more than one place on the site to add three spaces if they were required to be added. But the premise behind it all was, since it was the owner's collection, that, you know, they're his cars, if he's trucks, rather, and if he's, he's driving them, he's really, can drive one at a time, there wouldn't really be an opportunity for a lot of other people to be involved with the use of the collection.
Anybody on Zoom or anybody in the room have any questions?
I, I have some questions.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, I guess since we're talking about the parking, because I, I like the fact that the coverage is gonna be reduced to 65%, so it'll be conforming. Is, would it be possible to put like, parallel to the, to the septic, three spaces along that so you could still get the fire trucks around there? Like on the edge of...
We're not, we're not showing that as, um, as an access room for fire department, but yes, you could parallel park over that parking area on the existing asphalt, yes.
On the, on the side of the building where it says it do not enter?
On the rear of the building, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, that's an option.
And then, um, so I think I know the que, the answer to this, but I remember we had a gentleman in here before who owned the contractor business who wanted to warehouse, I believe, materials, right? And, and this...
Warehouse what?
Materials. He wanted to, and so, cause my question was then what it's gonna be now, and I think I know the answer, but, so if an accessory use is, doesn't exceed 40%, why isn't the main use of this a warehouse and then it's office, which would be at 34%? So, then you wouldn't need a variance.
I mean, I think it's, well, do you wanna go? Um, as far as the, the main use is the office and then this is really an ancillary use and as far as the building commissioner making that determination, it's not, we're in an industrial area, right? So, we want the office space, that's something that we can have. Um, as far as making it a collection is, that would make it a storage unit, which would make it non, uh, would be a no, would be a variance. That's how I see it.
So, this is exactly the situation we had with the general contractor that was here, looking for the same relief. He had, if, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that's what happened.
You're talking about the old J and R property?
I don't, okay, cause he had all that, the stuff that he had there, which...
But he's, yeah, he's not a general contractor, but that's right, go ahead. He's not a general contractor.
Yeah, and so, that was something that was going to be a variance and this is unrelated to that, but I don't understand why we don't have storage in an industrial, like warehouse type.
It's not allowed in our bylaws if we should be in there.
Yeah, it should, should be in there because...
Trying to help the applicants.
Yeah.
Office space is allowed and we're calling the associated storage.
Yeah, cause if it was the other way around and we had the warehouse allowed, you wouldn't even be here for that part of the use.
That's correct.
In this case, this office, though, is the primary use. This is a hobby. It's not like he's storing materials like a general contractor in there. This is his personal effects. So, that's how I would see it, also an argument to be had that this is the primary use. Correct me if I'm wrong, right? He's coming down here to...
I think the people, the people that are going to work there, the primary use is an office. The people that are go, people that are gonna go to, to that property to go to work in the morning are gonna go work in the office. The bathrooms are in the office, the utilities are in the office, and then there's a garage out back. So, it would be like having a house and saying the garage is the primary use, not the house.
So, do they have, you done...
No, I don't agree with that, but that's okay.
So, 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 so what business are they in? Are they in the property maintenance business or the property management business?
Property management.
Okay.
So, if you own an off, if you own an office building...
Property manager, you call them up and say, "My sink is leaking," and he calls a plumber. Property maintenance, you call them up and say, "My link, my sink is leaking," and he sends his plumber. So, we're a property management.
Correct.
Okay. So, antique trucks that are stored in the garage, I mean, we had a, you know, guy had a 56, 1956 dump truck and it's an antique and that's what he pulls his trailer and his lawnmower with, but, so it's, you know, it's all wordsmithing. So, I'm just, that's why I'm asking the question. I'm not, um, property management, I've heard the word maintenance a few times, that's why I keep, I think we're gonna, when we vote, we're gonna have to make a big deal about the office being a property management office. Because a property management office, yeah, they come in dressed in professional attire and they talk on the phone and they dispatch blue collar workers or whatever. But property maintenance, you could have that whole back building full of lawnmowers and a backhoe and you name it and whatever, you know, whatever other kind of maintenance you get, ladders and lions and tigers and bears, oh my. So, um, I'm good, going back to peer review. I see Mr. Cudero, even though he's hiding behind the easel, um, if I could, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I wasn't done with my questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were. I thought, I thought, I thought we gave you the chance to be done.
How many cars are gonna be stored inside?
Bays, max.
I, I, I don't know.
Do we have an answer for that?
I don't have an exact number.
Okay, we can get that.
Okay.
We could, we could, we could set a limit if you, if you're worried about it.
I'm just curious and I would, I'd like to see, obviously this is a site plan review and I'd like to see what the building, how everything's gonna look in terms of storage, office spaces, and correct me if I'm wrong, the office spaces are not gonna necessarily be limited to the owner. He can rent those out to anybody, right? The space, is it his intent to use those office spaces for his own business or could he rent them out to, you know, someone else? That's totally unrelated.
That's a sublease. I mean, as far as offices by right in this district, I hear what you're saying, if it's gonna be a landscape company and they're gonna put all this stuff in there, your decision can be specific as far as the warehouse and then you find that violation, the commissioner can go out there. I think it is smart to see what the stacking is in, in the garage so you can see how many cars and stuff. I think that could be something that we could provide.
I wanna add one thing.
Yep.
Um, when we started this project, Paul knows, we fi, we, we submitted building plans, we filed for a building permit, we were issued a building permit and all the work to the building has been done. So, when you, as far as subleasing, could, could you sublease? I, sure, I mean, I, I guess you could, but when you, there's one front door, there's one, and the, you could walk through the office. There's one reception area, there's one conference room, there's two offices and then there's a more common, common area of office where you would have cubicles. There's one little kitchen area. So, it's set up for, it's set up for one...
Single rent per business, okay.
I agree with that.
You, it's, you, you believe it's the, the buyer is an owner occupied business, that he's gonna occupy his building and...
I agree that the building is not set up for multiple tenants.
Okay.
As built.
Okay.
And it is built.
All right, thank you. That, that's everything I had.
Are you sure?
Yes.
You got a lot more written down.
Are you sure?
Well, Chris asked the question before I...
Okay. So, Mr. Cudero, you heard our conversation, come on up and, so at least I don't, you know, I don't, um, my question is, we can't ask you, you know, be gentle with them, but, but, um, I, you, you heard the tone of the conversation, you heard the, the extent to which they went on pre-planning it. Do you think you could look this plan over and give the board some kind of, uh, feedback as to, um, whether, whether we're in good shape or not without, you know, dragging the guy over the coals and...
Of course.
You know, you, you understand, you know, I, I get the applicant, I get the applicant's request for a waiver. I hope the applicant gets my tendency to wanna, you know, you know, sic you on them, but not really, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna put the vicious dog on them. I, I think that, uh, I think we've got a guy that's got a good reputation in town. What I've seen they've done so far looks good. They've already improved the property, you know, it looks like, you know, I wish I had enough money to collect old fire engines and run it and have a bunch of people answering the phone and sending people out, but what a great, what a, what a wonderful location for, what, what, what a under use of the location when you think about it. So, I think they're doing a good job. I don't think they're trying to build something that in two or three years, they're gonna say, "That's it, we're retired and the building's all set up for some other use." I don't think that's the intent here at all. So, um, with all that in mind, I, I still feel as though I'd like to just have you kinda look the plans over and reassure us that there's nothing blatant, you know... there's nothing blatant, you know, I've had, I've had very, very brilliant lawyers ask me to read contracts, and I'm not a lawyer, they just want another set of eyes, and I very rarely find anything, sometimes, you know, you find a bad word or something, and that's all we're looking for here.
Mr. Chair, we're happy to do it at your direction, of course, we won't play favorites, we'll go by the book, of course, but seeing the plans as GF presented them tonight, they are well advanced from what we're typically used to seeing, they've already put the effort into these plans, so I don't think it would be a large amount of work. We just would want to go through the drainage calculations, just check the numbers that they're presenting, and just give you that clean report back.
That's, I think, I think, does the board have any comments on this matter?
I'd like to see the plans, like for the building, for the office space, and for the cars, and like, we talked about the stacking and how that's going to be situated.
We can, we can provide those, and just as a side note, you know, we've, you know, Alan Majors reviewed a number of our plans for this board, and very, very fair, do a good job, you know, and everything is, we have no issue with it, but we're just trying to expedite things with the request.
The building exists, you're not changing the building.
No, not at all.
I've done limited reviews before on existing buildings, so I know that that's kind of where I was going at.
Yeah, I get you, I get you.
It's still not a requirement in the bylaw.
No, I know.
Best practice.
It's not a requirement, it's not a requirement for me to tell my wife she's beautiful every day, but it helps. Yeah, go ahead.
Tonight, it's been revealed that the office use is for a maintenance company. It's not, I was understanding, when Mr. Higgins came to me, he said it was office use for the car collector, so that's why my determination was an accessory use of the warehouse for the, he was, the antique cars. So, the information I have now, it should be office use, which is allowed, and it should just be a use variance for storage on the right-hand side. It's not associated warehouse storage with the office. It's not the same entity, that's not what I was told.
Okay, I just want to go back to my minutia over the words, maintenance and management. I know it's, it sounds trivial, but I don't want to get tripped over this, tripped up over this. They're doing off, they're doing property management, they're not doing property maintenance. Is your answer still the same if they're a property management company?
My determination was based on a company that was going to use the office space, and I asked numerous times, for car collecting, that was their business, so the associated use, I said, fine, is the cars that they collect, storage, so that's how I came to that determination.
That led you to the primary use?
I don't see a problem, I just, I don't think it's worded correctly. So the office space is allowed, but they should be seeking just a straight use variance for storage, which you could condition to be used just for used cars.
Or antique vehicles.
Whatever this guy is doing.
I agree with that, I think that it gets us to the same place, have, looking for a variance, so however, if the commissioner wants to just say it on record or have, you know-
Is everybody following along with the, okay?
Considering there was a huge storage unit that was approved really close to that, and every other lot over there has variance, so we really need to look at this area.
A bazillion foot storage unit next door in the same zone and-
Yeah.
The issue in town is that it's industrial zone, and it should be by right, the storage.
Yeah.
It's the craziest thing.
Well, when, some years ago, when the town changed the zones and made that, they had some, some Dudley Do-Right do-gooder said, "That'd be a great place to put industrial uses," but now the whole area has become retail, and, you know, I'm constantly having people telling me that those, you know, I know it's zoned industrial, and people are telling me, "Oh, there should be an Olive Garden there and everything, go buy a Olive Garden franchise and apply for a permit," but it's zoned industrial, and a restaurant's not even allowed use there, so we're dealing with the zoning, we're dealing with the zone that's there. We're gonna-
The project's a good project, but I think it should be approved with the right use variance.
We got a, we got a set of plans that Alan and Majors can look at, I think we're going to request a 53G account, do we need, you can get with Sonya and tell them how much, and you guys are going to cooperate with that. Do you think you need a lot of time to review these plans? Do you think we can come back in two weeks with a-
I do, I do, we could do them very quickly, we would try to get it back to you a week from today, so that way you have it a week before you meet.
That's, yeah, that's still, I know, I know our real chair likes it if we get the thing back, let the commissioner have a chance to see it, let everybody on the board have a chance to see it, and we don't like to jam things in, on the other hand, I don't like to string people out either, so if you can, if you can get it back within the two weeks, get between you and, and if there's back and forth, do the back and forth and come back in two weeks and say-
Your 9/11 date is-
It's dead?
It's really, really heavy.
It's really, really heavy?
Yeah, you have like over 10 hectares, not including, like, that's including your new public-
Okay. How bad does it screw your tenant up, your buyer up to have another month added to the closing date? I'm looking at you, Mickey.
This whole process has been lengthy, it's taken us a while, you know, Bill Madden, he has all kinds of vacation in the summer, it's very difficult to get him, to get him to draw the plans and file.
Well, you, you know, you hired a semi-retired engineer, you know, and-
All I hear is fish on, huh? Like, talking about engineering, fish on, fish on. I would love to be back before your next hearing.
Is it a possibility to put it on there, and then if it gets to the end?
I will tell you, there's nine continued public hair, it's not including your new continued public hair, and you have some pretty intense continued public hair that's happening right now. That's just my suggestion.
Yeah, I got you.
I, okay, I have another, yeah, definitely don't want a four-hour hearing, but I have another, perhaps, way to do this, is there a pathway, which we've done in the past, to look at the use variance and get that approved, because that would help us, and then go through the site plan?
Oh, I think we could accommodate that, would that help you with your, with your potential buyer?
That would help with the buyer, yep.
Well, tell the buyer we want to help him, we want his, we want his money in our town, you know, even if it's just going to you and not me. Okay, does the board feel like we can work on this? Everybody comfortable working on the variance this evening, making up, we're not closing the hearing, we're not making, we're not voting on the site plan, we're simply, they need a variance, what do you need a variance for anyway?
The storage, and I know they wanted to see kind of the stacking of the cars, so you can make that a condition.
But do they need a variance for the storage? Is storage in allowed use or-
No, it's not.
No.
Okay, so we need a variance, a use variance to give them storage at this site?
Correct.
Okay.
Specifically in the warehouse part is probably a, that part of the building, yep.
Okay, so, can we have a motion to, to approve a use variance for this warehouse?
So what restrictions do we want to put on this?
On the warehouse, whatever-
You want to be able to see what the stacking was like.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable knowing what the stacking was going to be, and putting conditions on vehicles.
And whether or not this, this storage would be strictly limited to-
Owner, built, vehicles by the owner of the property.
Right, so if he were to sell the building, we're not going to have a bunch of stored cars, and somebody's got different people coming in.
We could grant him a variance tonight and not allow any stacking, and if they want to stack, they can come back and ask for a modification, or they can come back and ask for a new variance or a new, if you, I don't think we're going to send this buyer away if you tell them you don't want them stacking vehicles in there, is that a concern of yours? They've got larger vehicles, is what I kind of heard.
Well, like, we'll say, as, that we've done it in the past, like, you can vote on a variance with some conditions, then come back, and it's still one decision.
To approve the site plan.
I mean, we just need to know the flavor of this is okay, so he can go back to the buyer, you know, and as far as like a limit, you know, we can get that, I, as far as maybe like 20 is what we were thinking.
20 vehicles in there?
Yeah, if you want to do like-
You can fit 20 in there?
Four thousand square feet.
Four thousand square feet, so how many square feet does a vehicle take?
Parking spaces, nine by 20.
Yeah.
So 200?
200.
200 into 4,000?
So basically-
Goes into four, eight times, 80? You could get 80 cars, no, that don't-
Forty.
Forty?
Twenty, yeah, 20 times 200.
200 square feet per space, and he's got 4,000.
Yeah. Okay, so you could get 20 cars in there, if they were fender to fender, bumper to bumper.
And you could double that if you stack it.
Right.
And, so, do you have a number in mind?
I don't have a number nine, that's why I wanted to see something like-
You could physically fit 20 cars on the floor, if you had put them all on roller skates and pushed them around and bumped them into each other and-
Yeah, I mean, if they're all his, and we don't have people going in and out of there from the public, and in the commissioner, they're safely done, I don't, I don't care how many he puts them.
What do you think, do you have any kind, can you utter a number that might-
I think you could double the floor space, again, I have a neighbor of mine, and whatever your floor space is, you can basically double it, it's, it's all professionally made, it's not-
And there's enough, and there's enough ceiling height in there to do it?
Absolutely, yeah.
So-
I don't think it's a real issue if that's how he wants to store his cars, but again, I'm not the board.
Would you object to him having 40 cars there? I mean, you were worried about the number, so-
No, well, I just, I would, I would approve the use variance with review of site plan when it's submitted to us, without limiting, you know, I mean, we can talk about that, I don't, it's not like-
So you'd rather not grant the variance tonight?
No, I'd rather, I would grant the variance, the use variance, tonight.
Yeah.
Subject to later review of the site plan.
That's fine, we've done that before.
Okay, Richard, are you listening to all this?
Yes, I am.
I think Nasi fell asleep.
Well, Nasi, Nasi was done.
Nasi was done, yeah, so, I mean, gee whiz, so, do you have any comments at this point?
No, I don't.
Okay, because Veronica seems to be the ideal person to make a motion, and hoping that she's going to make it, and I just wanted to make sure you hadn't fallen asleep. Okay.
It's too entertaining, Jim, I can't fall asleep.
What is it, too entertaining?
Yes, and I want to go out on Bill's boat and get a fish on.
Okay.
Put you to work.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the use variance and limit the use of the warehouse space to owner occupied vehicles.
Owner, owner, not owner occupied, he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to live in, he doesn't want to live in the vehicles.
Not occupied, you know what I'm saying, owner, owner owned?
His own, his own private collection, they're not-
Personal and not commercial use?
Yes.
Personal use.
Yes, right, right. And also subject to later site review of, site plan review.
When we, when we make our final decision, we're going to count on you to put better words to it, but you get the gist, you wanted the flavor.
Flavor.
You wanted the flavor, so, okay. When we come back for tropical smoothies, you're going to probably want a flavor on that one, too.
That got approved.
I know you did. Okay, that's your motion?
All right, second.
Motion's been made and seconded, made motion by Veronica Debonese, seconded by Troy Larson, all in favor, starting with Richard?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Myself, aye, you got your use variance.
So then, are we continuing?
When are we continuing to?
And so, go ahead.
I still want it.
You still want, you're a very wantful, very needy person.
I have a feeling people will continue like they did tonight, you could sort of like book yourself too much, and then it will come down.
You still want to come back in two weeks? Well-
I'm going to say no, myself, only because we just voted on that so that we could extend it out, so.
Okay, so you're not going to agree to a two-week, you want a four-week extension?
25th, yeah.
And we got a, we got a person over here that works real hard to keep us professional or keep us in order and organized, and if she's already, if she's already squeaking, which she rarely does, she's probably given us-
I was just giving you my opinion.
No, I know.
I see, I know what's before you.
No, no.
It's really up to you, I mean-
No, we appreciate you-
If you can get us plans, and not, I know the board and the chair likes to see things a week before, it's really up to you, I, I'm sitting here anyway, one way or another.
We got, we got Richard on Zoom, Troy, how do you feel? Let's do a straw vote, can we? Do you want to see him in two weeks, or do you want to, we can, we can outnumber, we can go all the guys against the one girl, you know, boys against the girls or something?
Well, I kind of feel like we got a lot going on.
Huh?
I do feel like we have a lot going on.
Okay, I would feel better going to September 25th, that way-
You got them all on your side.
They can do the peer review, they can submit it, they can rebuttal it, and maybe you can get all that taken care of before the 25th.
So, and actually, probably, this brings up a point, it probably would be good for us to know ahead of time, because we made contingencies tonight, everybody went to 9/11, I don't think we put anybody out past 9/11, not knowing what the schedule was.
I just kept writing, I was like, do they realize, like, was it-
Yeah, no, and unfortunately, because you're the last one.
No, we haven't got a clue of what we're doing.
We'll be the first on 9/25, hopefully.
Pardon me?
We'll be the first on 9/25, hopefully.
You don't want to be last, you were last tonight?
Every week.
Every week you were last?
Every two weeks.
Because you were last on 21st and all the other-
See, look at that, the power of negotiation. Are there any fishing trips planned for the 25th, or anything like that?
I have a meeting to be at.
Do you really?
Right here.
Huh? Oh, here, okay, okay, that's a good, that's a good answer. Anybody on Zoom that needs to be heard it before we make a motion to continue? I don't see anybody in the back room or peeking around the corner in the hall, so, any other comments from the board? Okay, let's, let's entertain a motion to continue, you guys are going to work out the peer review logistics in the meantime, and everybody will have had plenty of time.
I'll make a motion to continue to September 25th.
We have a motion, do we have a second to continue?
Chris Conti, I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Veronica Debonese, seconded by Chris Conti, to continue this matter until September 25th, and we request that they be put earlier in the schedule. All in favor, Richard? You did fall asleep.
What's that?
Okay, we're voting to continue to September 25th, we'd like your yea or nay.
I just want to say that there's a lot of breakup going on in the Zoom, so I couldn't hear what you guys are saying, but yes, I am a, I say yes for the extension.
I'm sorry for, we had three or four people talking at once, that's what caused all the breakup on you, I'm sorry, but we let it go because nobody was saying anything worth hearing.
Okay.
Okay, so we got a motion to continue, it's been yayed by Richard, Troy?
I, yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
And Chris Conti, yes.
Chris Conti, yes, we're continued, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, thank you for putting a nice plan in front of us. Thank you very much. Thank you for putting a nice plan in front of us that probably doesn't even need to be reviewed, but.
It's fine.
So, I just want to ask this.
Go ahead.
Chris, did you, did you mention that I was coming off of the field hockey field, which is why I was sweaty and dressed like this when I came in?
I didn't.
No, somebody said, who's that sweaty, no. Something about, oh, that's, that's, they're in the Hague, they're not, no.
All right, so I just want that on record. This is, that's the reason.
That's, you, you were out playing soccer?
Field hockey.
Field, you're playing, are you in the, on the team or?
No, no, I'm the coach for the high school team.
You're the co.
Yeah.
For the high school?
Yeah, the girls' field hockey team.
Wow, cool.
It was too hot to practice at 3:00.
Is it like, is it like a volunteer position or? It's a real, I know a lot of the sports got diluted, so I'm glad to hear that.
I make a lot more than I make here.
Well, yeah. We can work on that.
Mr. Chair, I think there was a request to have a discussion about 59 Main Street tonight that you received.
59 Beach?
Main Street.
Main Street. But the applicant's not here. There was a request.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
The engineer's here and.
Engineer's here?
I've been asked to speak on, on behalf.
Okay, Mr. Madden, don't take off on us, okay? I did see that email, I didn't know if there was a change of heart or anything, so I didn't.
I didn't see the email, but.
I didn't see the email.
That's, that's what I've been asked to do, so.
Yeah, there was, there was something, I saw something on email that, um, I think it was Mr. Buckland sent out a message, maybe, he sent it to, he sent it to Mr. Elklasse, probably unaware that, um, he wasn't be chairing tonight, but it was, I, I got the CC and, um, I'm sure I can find it quick because.
Is this about the, um, the dumpster shed?
It, it says Nazzy, that he won, would be very pleased if you can take up dumpster building that he built too large and it needs a modification of the variance that was issued to allow it to remain, but it is not on the agenda. So.
I guess the first question is, do you even want to talk about it?
I'm pretty sure Nazzy's position would be, we shouldn't. I'm, um, I know that there's a lot of people in the town hall and in the town that are behind Mr. Warren and in favor of what he's doing. I don't think that he has intentionally schnuckered anybody. I think, and I'm saying this so that if he's watching the video, he'll hear me say it like I didn't say it behind his back. I think he's a guy that as he goes, his mind, he changes his mind often. You know, he, like, all I can think of is my sister-in-law remodeling the house that she inherited from her father, and I was helping them, and she wanted us to put walls up so she could see what they'd look like, and then if she didn't like them, we could move them. Makes me, Danny makes me think of her. So, um, and I, I mean that in, you know, not in disrespect, it's just, some people can draw a set of plans and then build that set of plans and be happy with it. Other people start building, they go, gee whiz, you know, I wish I had done this and I wish I had done that. I think that's where we are with Danny. I believe a cease and desist has been issued. So. What's the scoop? What happened? What's going on? How much more is, how big is it? How much bigger is it? Can we, can, you know, can you, can you talk to us a little bit about it? It's kind of an informal discussion, we haven't officially decided what we're going to.
Okay, I believe that the.
Come on, come on back up and so that it is on the record, so.
Look, and can I ask you a question before we do that? Just, if this is a minor modification, it would not have to be re-advertized, right? So is this what we're determining?
It can be under other discussion, it doesn't have to be advertised, no, not if it's a minor.
Yeah, that's, that's what the premise, I'm, but thank you for clarifying that.
Do we need to determine that it's a minor one? Has it been determined that it's a minor one?
Well, we can't determine if it's major reminder until we hear what's going on, that's where I am, and then we're going to decide.
Yeah, so that's.
That's, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, I just want to be clear on what, what we're doing.
I believe the variance that was granted for that, um, trash enclosure was for a, a building that was to be nine by 30 feet long.
Here's the, here's the, the plan that you voted on originally for the variance.
Go ahead.
And what you see was the proposed nine foot, nine feet wide, 30 feet long dumpster enclosure.
And it was shown at three feet off the property line, okay?
Right.
And we, we, we okayed the three feet off the property line, yeah, okay.
It's actually 5.3 feet off the property line.
Here's the, here's an existing conditions plan of, of the project.
Okay.
There's an existing slab that that was to be put on, and you can see the 5.3 up there in the upper right-hand corner of it, so it's 5.3 off the property line, but the dimension that was constructed of that enclosure was 31 feet, 1 inch by 12 feet, 1 inch. I actually taped that off yesterday myself, so that's why I know.
The length is how much over?
It was 1 foot, 1 inch over.
1 foot, 1 inch over on the length, but on the depth, it went from nine to 12?
It was 3 feet 1 over. It went from required.
It went 3 feet deeper?
12 feet, 1 inch wide from permitted nine foot wide.
That's correct.
Does that, okay, you agree with all that? Okay.
And to be clear, the new one is located 23.7 feet from the, the road property line, and the proposed was 26 feet. So it's, it's a little closer to the road than what was originally proposed as well.
And it's, is this an enclosed roof on it and everything? So this, I mean, if, I, I'm all for dumpster enclosures with roofs on them, I mean, you know, I think that's pretty cool. So, I think we've heard enough that we can now decide whether we think this is minor or major.
Do you have a question about the setback? Does that create, is it within the, um, what, what is the setback supposed to be? I guess that's my question.
The real issue is it was approved for, uh, 2 feet, 3 feet, sorry.
3 feet.
3 feet, and so they've actually made it less, so.
Not, um, I mean from the road, not that.
Oh, I, I don't.
So does it create, my question is, is it creating a variance? Is it creating anything?
I didn't realize the front setback was, uh, has changed.
So what is it now from the street to the, to the end, to the edge of the building?
23.7.
And what was it?
It was proposed at 26.
And what's allowed, I guess is my question.
So it's gotten 3 feet closer, more or less, 3 feet 6 inches, something like that. Take a minute to look.
Did they also move one of the doors from the side to the front?
They've added, they added a, um, sorry, they added another overhead door.
It looks like there was proposed doors on the end of it. Is that what I'm seeing here, Bill, with these wings? Are those constructed today?
I thought I saw, I didn't see a door constructed there yesterday, I thought on the plan that I saw was a, was a pass door there, and the overhead doors were on the, the 30-foot dimension.
The original plan had two overhead doors, and one bay was blank, and on the gable end, I believe is a double set of doors, not overhead, to open sideways like this so they could, they could come in.
Right.
So they're not coming in from the gable end anymore, they've, that's.
I, I can't do this by memory and.
Okay.
Adding the, the third bay does change the looks of the building, too, so that's something else that needs to be addressed.
I mean, personally, my only concern is if we're creating a variance because it, it's not allowed to be within, say, 25 feet from the road, from, on the front setback. If there's no change for that, I'm, I feel like it's a minor.
But the building is, it's, it's been built.
Partially built.
They, they started building it and, and the inspector or commissioner went by and said, whoa, wait a minute, this isn't what we said okay to. This is a little bit bigger. And they said, oopsie, or they said, you caught us, or, they didn't, they didn't answer.
I don't know what they said, but they ceased and discussed.
They did, they did stop. They can't open the building, or they can't open the, the business without a.
That's not true, that's been addressed that they, uh, we talked this out, Mr. Madden, myself, yesterday, and Mr. Buckland, that they could get a six-yard dumpster, enclose it in a fence, and put a gate in front of it. So I thought this, I, I don't understand why we're talking about this tonight, but that's fine.
Okay, so you've got a, you've got a solution that would allow them to go forward?
That's what was agreed upon yesterday, afternoon in my office.
So.
That's correct, and, you know, in a, I spoke with Danny Warren and his construction team, and that's what we told them to do, a cease and desist, and, you know, this is what you have to do in the interim. You know, temporary, small dumpster enclosure with a, um, with a chain-linked fence around it with a gate with slats.
Where, where's that dumpster going to close, be, enclosure be, though?
It's going to be right next to the, see where the transformer is over there, just go to the left of the transformer, where the little bump out is through the building, it's going to go right there.
And it's temporary?
For, it's like a, yes, it's very temporary.
Okay, so.
So, the, the dimensions are one thing, but the structure, the, the look of the structure has changed, and this is in the historical district, so I, I don't think they should be ignored. It's taken on a, a different look with the three doors, it's, it's a different look.
You're not finding it a minor modification?
I'm not on the board, I'm just trying to give you my opinion and, and thinking of other things that I have to deal with. So, historicals, we have no idea if they're, they're going to hap, be happy with that building, that they've approved every single thing down there from the light bulbs.
They did, or they have, they've had the right to?
They've had their, everything.
They've had their say on everything?
That's right, and so they had their say on this building, so it's a nice looking building, that was proposed. I personally don't like the new change to it. It looks commercial, the way it was before, the way he had it designed, it looked like an old farm building.
Okay.
Two doors and a, and a spot like it, and a farm building would have the two doors and maybe like a, a workshop to the left.
Now it's three doors.
My opinion.
Okay.
I didn't realize this is a historical district. I had no idea, so, I, we would have to see, I guess, what it looks like.
So you're, you're, you're tenant and.
I agree, I drove by there today, going to the marina there and.
I'm not asking your pitch, opinion, Richard, because I already get.
And, and I saw it, I noticed it, and I was like, that's not what we approved, and then I saw your letter today.
So. The question, the, the way I read the letter from Mr. Buckland was, would we have a discussion about it? We've discussed it, we haven't made a decision, and we've indicated that we're really not willing to make a decision this evening based on what we've heard. That we feel, we feel we've been informed that there's a solution, that this isn't going to hamper the progress of the project.
The solution in place, a temporary solution, will not be the cause of the restaurant not opening.
If they don't open, it won't be, be because of this, because of our decision this evening.
That's correct.
So. That said, let's just, um, either work it out with the applicant, either, either work it out as far as fix the building and make it what was approved, or come up with what everybody agrees to and let the applicant come back with a appeal of the commissioners to. You've got a cease and desist, it stays, it stays in place, unless you rescind it, he's either got the choice to make the building conform to what was approved.
That's correct.
Or you've got to be somehow satisfied that you'd rescind your cease and desist.
That would only be by relief from you.
Pardon me?
That would only be relief from the, from the ZBA, that's the only way.
The only way you are going to remove your cease and desist is if we give them the relief to leave what's there there.
That's one way, or the other way would be to build.
Modify, modify the building to?
Yeah, bring it, make it, make the building nine by 30, and, and Mr. Warren or his representative is, is well, well aware of that.
Okay.
And if I could, I think the other option would be to bring drawings to us so we can determine if it's a minor modification or a major modification, right? I mean, if we look at it and we say, okay, you're going to make it look historic, so it seems minor if it has the flavor of the original drawings, I mean, that's just what I'm thinking, um, but without those, we can't say that.
The extra depth, the nine feet to 12 feet, doesn't concern me that much. The extra foot and an inch doesn't concern me that much. But I guess if we're going from two doors to three doors, it's, it's starting to, like you said, it's starting to become more commercial looking.
My opinion.
So.
I, I definitely think that historical would want a say in that.
So the, the, there must have been, maybe Mr. Madden knows, maybe he doesn't, there must have been something that motivated the change. What was it, what were they going to accommodate by making this change? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay, then, we don't need you to make up an answer.
No, I, I don't.
You know.
Been a lot of changes as.
Yeah, 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 he, and, and that's, and they've always, and it's, oh, the changes have always been to make the project better, and maybe somehow this makes the project better, but we don't know that, so, um, you know, either, if, if it comes, if, if an, if an appeal to your decision comes before us, if appeal to the commissioners cease and desist comes before us, as the engineer, we're going to need to see some elevations and some, you know, some supporting documents. If no appeal comes before us because the building goes back, you know, this, Warren or Warren Enterprises or Danny or whoever, they're not, I've seen them rip stuff out and change it, so.
The only issue I have is, so the permit was approved by historical approving it. So, if we come back or the applicant comes back here to modify a, a minor modification, you're going to step over them.
Well.
So the permit will be in effect, instead of the permit being built as per the decision.
Does he need, does he need their permission as well? Does, I mean.
Absolutely.
If we say, okay, go ahead, modify it, he still needs to go to the hysterical to society and get them to say, okay?
It's not really in a process because all, he has a building permit right now for nine by 30. If the applicant comes back and says, I want to build it 31 by 12 with three doors, and you guys say yes, you're going to, the, the historic's going to get jumped over.
I mean, we, we do have the right to make that decision, but I wouldn't want to because that's what the ZBA is. I don't think we have anything set, I, correct me if I'm wrong, where, what is the process? Do we bring the historic back in with us, or how, how would that even work for a minor, minor modification that another board weighed in on?
This is all new to me that this was going to happen tonight, so I'm just.
So.
Trying to bring it up.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, I get what you, everybody's trying, and, and, um, so the historical commission has no power, or they have no?
If you count it as a minor modification, the building permit will just be modified from nine by 30 to 12 by 31, and then, and you're going to modify, you know, it's got three doors. When does the historical get to weigh in?
Well, didn't they get to weigh in at some point on it?
They already did, and they approved a building with two.
Okay, so it's not, it's not what they approved, so.
That's not what they built.
So I, I guess where I'm missing the point here is if the historical commission said, we approved two doors and now you got three, doesn't that nullify their approval?
He could say, he also, you, you guys gave a decision back that the building's supposed to be nine by, by 30, and that's what the building permit says right on, to be built as per.
Yeah, I got that.
As per the decision of the planning, of the ZBA and the two plans presented, the site plan and the architecturals.
I just don't want to, I don't want to force the guy back into the nine-foot-deep building if the dumpster doesn't fit in there, that's.
That I don't have an issue with, and that, that's something you could do. I'm just looking out for the historical, if, if the third door wasn't there, minor modification.
Right, maybe he could move the door onto the side where it was.
Maybe you could get the.
Put it where it was.
So. So, was, can anybody contact the historical? Can, can you guys, do you guys have to deal with the historical?
I wasn't dealing with historical, Warren Inter, Danny Warren was dealing with them directly, but regardless, if they, you know, I'm pretty sure that they're gonna want the 31 by 12 building, and there's a process we're gonna need to go through in order to get that.
Who's, who's they, is gonna, you're, you're a client?
Danny, yeah.
But what about the historical people? What are they gonna want?
I think that, I think that they're gonna need to be involved with that decision-making also.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at, that, you know, can they be involved before this comes back in front of us, is what I'm saying? Can we...
I think that's what we would end up having to do, anyway, you know, and I think that, like I said, we put in, we got together yesterday, we talked about an interim plan. Everybody was pretty much in agreement with that interim plan, and with the, with the knowledge that if, if you want that building constructed at 31 by 12, that we need to come back before the zoning board of appeals get that permit modified.
Okay, so, but in the meantime, if the historical people say, yeah, sure, we don't have a problem with that, when you come back in front of us, if you had that letter or that information, it would make it a lot easier for us, if in fact you have to come back.
Yeah, and that's the, that's the expectation.
Okay, okay, I get, so, I just, I'm hearing, you know, I just don't want anybody thinking that this board stepped on another board or commission's toes, and I guess you guys want to try to work it out. They wanted to have us to have a conversation, you brought it up, we had a conversation. I think, oh, I said this in a different conversation earlier, and I'll say it on the public record. I like Danny a lot, and he's a good guy, and he's doing a good thing for the town. We got a project that's being built with the good old boy mindset in, in a town that's got no more good old boys, and I, and I mean that in a, the day was when people went around and talked to all the right people, and things happened, and wink, wink, nod, nod, and yeah, okay, and we're hammers leaning towards, you know, you can talk to all the people behind the scenes, but it's gonna be done right, so that's where we are. Say it again?
Nothing.
Was that, Richard said?
He made a joke, and he'd rather not repeat it.
Oh, Chris?
Rich.
Rich, Richard, Richard, okay, he said wink, wink, nod, nod?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't hear it. We're done. Any more discussion?
I'll make a motion to close the...
It's only 9/25. I mean, we can run till 10, you know?
Just because we can doesn't mean we have to.
Well, we can, just, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Save it to the 11. You're gonna need time.
What is that?
I said save it, shorten tonight, because you're gonna need it on the 11.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. So the motion's been made to close. Do I have a second? Nobody wants?
I second.
Oh, okay. Richard?
Close adjourned.
Can we close this meeting?
Aye.
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 Jonathan?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
And Chris Conti, aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned.
Night, all.
Thanks for your, for your time and all the effort with all the stuff tonight, it's, a lot, a lot moving parts around here.
Yeah, there are.